I call to order the special town meeting that has been noticed for this date, October 30th, 2023, at 7:30 PM. To begin our proceedings this evening, I would ask you to please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I would note that the flag of the United States of America is to my right, to your left, on the stage. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. You may be seated. We have traditionally begun our sessions with a call for spiritual guidance. It is an honored tradition at Needham Town Meeting. Tonight, we are joined by a member of the Needham clergy to deliver that call. On October 7th, 2023, the world witnessed an atrocious surprise attack on the state of Israel. President Biden called this attack "pure, unadulterated evil." Hamas attacked civilians, leaving 1,400 dead, including 30 American citizens, and over 200 citizens were kidnapped. At this time, we reflect on the toll these attacks have taken on the people of Israel, Jewish people around the world, and our Jewish neighbors here in Needham, some of whom have families directly affected by the events of October 7th. We extend our prayers, our support, our sympathy, and our compassion to the members of our Jewish community. Given these unprecedented circumstances, I found it appropriate to reach out and invite a faith leader from Needham's Jewish community to deliver our call for spiritual guidance at this special town meeting tonight. Therefore, at my invitation, I would like you to join me in welcoming Rabbi Leslie Gordon of Temple Aliyah in Needham. Rabbi Gordon was born and raised in Tucson, Arizona. She received her Bachelor of Arts cum laude in psychology from Brandeis University in 1984. In 1981, she received the rabbinic ordination and was awarded a Master of Arts from the Jewish Theological Seminary of America, where she was a recipient of the Lampert Prize in Talmud and the Loenthal Prize in Practical Theology. Leslie has served as a rabbi and senior rabbi in several congregations and has held the position of chaplain of Jewish students at Babson College. She has been a member of Needham's Temple Aliyah since 1997, and as you know, Temple Aliyah has been a fixture in our community since 1964. Welcome, Rabbi Gordon.
Are Jewish friends, are friends with Israeli family or connections to Israel are in pain? I might have thought that no words could ease that pain, but I have learned that compassion and empathy do in fact bring a measure of healing. When you reached out to Rabbi Pearlman and me to ask if we would bring this call for spiritual guidance, Michael Fee said out loud the most important words, "People walk among us who are grieving." So I thank you, Michael, for seeing that pain and for not being too shy or too polite to name it as grief. The greatest gift we can give to our friends and to the members of our community who are grieving is the permission to say, "I am grieving." We are so grateful to be invited to name and share our anguish. We grieve for the babies and toddlers, for the wedding dates that became funerals, for the grandmothers and the orphans, for the hundreds of music-loving, self-styled hippies gathered at a concert celebrating peace, and we grieve for the anguish of the families who still do not know where their loved ones are. And even as we rage and grieve for these civilians, these Israeli parents and children and grandparents, our hearts hold dread and terrible sorrow for the fate of the innocent civilians of Gaza, those who do not subscribe to the tactics of terrorists but are often the first victims. And we grieve for the dream of peace, which right now feels more distant than ever. Just today, Mike Kanter and I received this letter. Dear Rabbi Gordon, Kanter Gloth, and the Temple Aliyah staff team, as your clergy colleagues and neighbors, we've been holding you in our hearts as this war unfolds. Being in spiritual leadership while also experiencing one's own grief and fear is so, so much, you don't have to bear it alone. And they conclude with a translation of a very common comforting Hebrew prayer, "May the One who makes peace in the high places make peace over us, over Israel, and over all humanity. With care, your neighboring clergy members." I want to say that you may notice throughout Needham and greater and through other communities too, in the past few days, you may have noticed trees tied with blue ribbons. It is a wordless protest against the barbarity of taking civilian hostages. We know of 240 civilian captives. They are mostly Israeli, but they are also American and German, and Polish, Thai, Nepalese, Ecuadorian, and they come from 30 other nations. We want the world to see that we have not forgotten the hostages, and we will not accustom ourselves to their captivity. The ribbons have one simple message: Bring them home. So I'd like to conclude with a short prayer for captives. It's a prayer that is centuries old but is now being recited in congregations around the world. Our brothers and sisters who are distressed and in captivity, who wander over sea and over land, may the Holy One have mercy on them and bring them from distress to comfort, from darkness to light, from slavery to redemption, now, swiftly and soon. And let us say, amen. Thank you.
Proceeding with our special town meeting, we must move to the declaration of a quorum. The moderator moves, or moderator moves, the moderator rules that a quorum is present and finds that the meeting can conduct its business, and I would ask the town clerk to record the presence of a quorum in the official records of this meeting. Next is the reading of the annual town meeting warrant, and for that purpose, I recognize our town, the special town meeting warrant, and for that purpose, I recognize our town clerk, Ms. Theodore K. Eaton.
Norfolk SS, to either of the constables in the town of Needham in said county, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby required to notify the qualified town meeting members of the town of Needham to meet in the Needham Town Hall on Monday, the 30th day of October, 2023, at 7:30 in the afternoon, then and there, to act upon the following articles.
Having completed the reading of the call to the meeting, I ask unanimous consent to waive the reading of the special town meeting warrant in its entirety. Hearing no objection, I find unanimous consent, and I would ask the town clerk to complete the reading of the special town meeting warrant by reading the officer's return.
By virtue of this warrant, I did on October 14th, 2023, notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Needham to meet as within directed by posting true and attested copies of this warrant in not less than 20 places in said town, which October 14th, 2023, was more than 14 days before the time of holding such special town meeting. Richard Graham, Constable.
Thank you, Mrs. Eaton. Some words about the arrangement of the hall this evening. Designated rows on the floor are reserved for town meeting members. Tonight, these are the first 11 rows of the town meeting floor. Members as well as elected and appointed officials are able to come forward of those 11 rows or occupy those 11 rows. Visitors, registered voters, may sit in the non-designated rows. There are two in the floor, and of course, the balcony is also open for that purpose. The marshal, Mr. Jakes, is in the rear of the hall and will assist you and will also assist me in enforcing the limits of the space reserved for town meeting members, particularly and especially when it comes to voting. As always, please wear your town meeting member badges to identify yourself as a town meeting member, and once you are situated in your seat of choice, please do not move from your chair until we take a recess. Proponents of main motions may use the center podium to address town meeting. When we engage in discussion, you may address town meeting only after being recognized by the moderator. I ask that you rise, raise your hand, and say, "Mr. Moderator, to be recognized." Once recognized, please proceed to one of the standing microphones positioned in the center aisle, and please stand back from the microphone if you need help with the adjustment. Mr. Jakes will come and assist you. Face masks are optional at this meeting. They may be worn, of course, by anyone who chooses to do so. If you wear one while you are addressing town meeting, however, from one of the microphones, I would ask that you speak just a little bit louder so that all may hear. Moving to our rules of procedure, when a member is recognized by the moderator, you must state your name and your precinct so that the town clerk may accurately keep records. If for some reason related to a disability, a member cannot rise, raise their hand, or say, "Mr. Moderator, please inform me," so that appropriate accommodations may be made. Anyone entering or exiting the meeting area during our session, for example, if you use the restrooms, must use care not to disrupt this session. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices in your possession. I'd like you to check that status now as we proceed through the rules. Consider putting these devices away, consider turning these devices off so that you may devote full attention to our proceedings and the important work you've been elected to accomplish here. No firearms or weapons may be brought into this meeting except by law enforcement personnel as a sign of respect for this legislative chamber. There is no eating or drinking in the hall, and no hats may be worn except for medical or religious purposes. Members, non-members, speakers, all attendees must observe our rules of conduct and comport themselves with respect for others and commit to engaging in civil discourse. Any speaker who refers to individuals, personalities, or who in the judgment of the moderator exceeds the bounds of civility will be ruled out of order by the moderator. Please remember that we are one community, one town meeting, with one common goal, the best interests of our town. Moderator shall enforce all rules. All commentary, remarks, and inquiries must be addressed to the moderator as chair of the meeting. Your attention is drawn to the disclosure required by an attorney who has been employed by one who has an interest in matters before this town meeting as required in Article 1, Section 1.7 of the Needham General Bylaws. Blank forms for lengthy motions are available from town council and should be employed. If lengthy or complicated motions are not drafted and submitted for review by the moderator and town council prior to being placed on the floor, the speaker will yield the floor to another speaker while the drafting and formulation process is underway. There is no zoning articles tonight, no amendments of our zoning bylaws, but it's always good to remember the special rule that we have relating to modifications of the zoning bylaws. Short motions and procedural motions need not be in writing. Tonight, we only have very limited motions to amend the budget, and therefore, our comprehensive rule for budget amendments that applies to the full operating budget is not in effect. Parliamentary motions such as point of information, point of order, shall be strictly construed so as not to elongate or permit debate after a motion to move the previous question has been placed on the floor. All limits on debate shall be enforced by the moderator. Questions asked for general informational purposes unrelated to a matter under consideration by the meeting are out of order. As stated in the moderator's memorandum to town meeting members in connection with the annual town meeting, this meeting is being livestreamed and ultimately televised through the good efforts of the Needham Channel. Any inappropriate conduct involving the live coverage or the cameras shall be deemed out of order and addressed swiftly and definitively by the moderator. I seek unanimous consent to adopt the following rules of practice governing discussion and debate as described in the informational memorandum I distributed in advance of this meeting. Affirmative presentations by proponents of articles, recommendations of the finance committee, committee chairpersons, attorneys engaged for the purpose of addressing town meeting, 12 minutes in total. At the discretion of the proponents, the 12 minutes may be allocated among more than one speaker. Time limits for discussion, motions to amend town meeting, excuse me, time limits for discussion, motions such as motions to amend, proponents of those motions, town meeting members speaking to a particular article or a motion on the floor, non-town meeting members, visitors other than attorneys who have been engaged for the purpose of addressing town meeting, five minutes all-inclusive per article. Responsive remarks by sponsors, the select board, the finance committee, or other members of town boards or departments, five minutes in total per response. I seek your unanimous consent for the adoption of these rules of procedure and practice at this special town meeting. Hearing no objection, I find unanimous consent that the rules of procedure and practice as described by the moderator are voted and adopted, and I would ask the town clerk to record this adoption in her records. I'll take a brief moment to just mention some community announcements that I have been asked to share with you. First, the Needham Bank Great Hall Concert Series is featuring Boston Baroque, the ex-Tet, with an opening act by the Needham High School Chamber Orchestra, Saturday, November 4th, at 8:00 PM, here, of course, in this hall. The 12th Annual Needham Diversity Summit will be held on Sunday, November 5th, between 1:00 PM and 5:00 PM at the Pollard Middle School. Bridging and Belonging, Local Stories, and a Roadmap for Change. There's free registration at needhamdiversity.org. You can also contact town meeting member Kim Marie Nichols for more information about those two events. The Needham Multifamily Zoning Conference will be held on Thursday, November 9th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM here in this space. This is a community meeting to discuss multifamily housing and in particular, the MBTA Communities Law. Finally, St. Bartholomew and St. Joseph Parishes will be hosting an Advent Christmas concert, a festival of lessons and carols, Sunday, December 3rd, at 4:30 PM. Moving on to the status of the special town meeting warrant, there are no changes in the affirmative main motions from the articles that are appearing in your warrant. With regard to articles under which the proponents no longer have an interest of presenting a main motion to this meeting, otherwise known as withdrawn articles, there is one to report. It is found on page 2, and it is Article 3. At this time, I also report on articles that are subject to motions to amend or other motions from their proponents and therefore cannot be passed by unanimous consent on the consent calendar. There are none to report for this special town meeting warrant. So now you know the status of the warrant, and you know that everything except Article 3 is in play. So we will move on to our consent calendar. As is our custom, after I will now read eligible articles by their number. After I read an eligible article by its number, I will ask anyone who desires that the article be placed upon the floor for discussion and possible motions, express their view by saying "question" and in a voice that I can hear. Hopefully, prior to this meeting, members have had the opportunity to view the presentations that have been and other information that has been posted on the town website, to review the information in the warrant, and hopefully, collect information or pose questions to town officials. Accordingly, when considering the warrant and the business we have before us, as always, please act thoughtfully and consider which articles truly require discussion at town meeting. That choice is yours and no one else's. Those articles for which nothing is stated, question is not asserted, will, as customary, be deemed adopted by unanimous consent. We'll move to the reading of the warrant, and I will listen very attentively. Page 1, Article 1. Page 2, Article 2. Page 3, Article 4. Page 3, Article 5. Page 4, Article 6. Page 5, Article 7. Page 5, Article 8. Page 6, Article 9. Page 6, Article 10. Page 7, Article 11. Page 7, Article 12. Page 8, Article 13. Page 8, Article 14. Page 17, Article 15. Page 19, Article 16. If you'd just give me a moment, please, that completes the reading of the articles by number. Just give me a moment to confer with the town clerk and compare notes. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The following articles, having been read by their number and announced to town meeting, the main motions thereunder having been on file for public inspection for at least seven days prior to the special town meeting. The call for interest in discussion and debate was made and none was received for the following articles and the main motions thereunder. Article 1, Article 5, Article 6, Article 7, Article 8, Article 9, Article 10, Article 11, Article 12, and Article 13. No request for discussion or debate having been made for the articles as read by the moderator. The main motions under each of those articles are hereby adopted by unanimous consent, and I declare Articles 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13 enacted by unanimous consent and disposed of. This brings us to our first article for your discussion. It is Article 2. Under Article 2, Mr. Kevin Keane moves that the town appropriate for youth health initiatives, Children's Hospital Community Benefit Payment. The text of the main motion under Article 2 is identical to Article 2 in your special town meeting warrant. Speaking on behalf of the proponents, which is the select board, Mr. Keane.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, as you know, we're getting a new neighbor. Boston's Children's Hospital is constructing an outpatient surgical center on First Avenue in Needham. As part of the host community agreement signed between the hospital and the select board, Needham will receive $200,000 annually to be spent on youth services. Already, Needham has received $200,000 as agreed upon when the building permit was issued. We anticipate another $200,000 when the project is 50% complete, so imprecisely, within this fiscal year. In commencing on July 1st, following the occupancy permit, we look forward to payments of $200,000 every year. These payments can only be received to the town's general fund, so a vote by you is required to effectively capture the $400,000 in ear market towards its intended and contractually required purpose. Town meeting members should get accustomed to seeing more articles regarding these community benefit payments in the future. This year, we seek your support to use the first two payments to hire two new full-time staff positions at Needham Youth and Family Services. Looking for an outreach clinician and a community training coordinator. Needham Youth and Family Services provides professional, clinical, mental health support free of charge to Needham's youth. Many towns offer similar services, but Needham does it best. Right now, youth services staff are finding that the repercussions of the pandemic continue to result in a significant increase in depression, anxiety, and suicidal ideation amongst Needham's youth. Many of these are extraordinarily intricate and go beyond a therapy room. Whole family systems have been compromised, and the challenges are more complex. I would add that this appropriation would be extended over two years. These positions would not be paid out of the town's operating budget, but rather through this dedicated revenue source. Needham is fortunate that we have funding through Children's Hospital and that we can take the steps necessary to protect our children. The select board recommends adoption of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keane. Speaking on behalf of the finance committee and delivering the finance committee's recommendation,
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Moderator and fellow town meeting members. Article 2 seeks your vote on the transfer and appropriation of $400,000 for youth health initiatives. To meet the appropriation, $200,000 will be raised from the tax levy and $200,000 transferred from the overlay surplus. Mr. Keane has given us a great overview of the Children's Hospital Host Community Agreement and the payments that the town will receive annually thereunder. Just a few things to note, these are annual payments. These are annual payments of $200,000. They are not indexed to inflation, so it's a flat $200,000. The $200,000 payments will be sufficient, more than sufficient, in the opinion of Health and Human Services, to hire the two clinicians that they're intending to hire. However, because, again, these payments are not indexed to inflation but are flat, at some point in time, we will have, they will have to address how you might fund these positions or evaluate services. The other thing that's important to note is that since this is an annual appropriation not in the operating budget, you will, you as town meeting members, will need to make this, approve this appropriation every year and expect to have a report from the select board on how the funds have been spent to date. Mr. Moderator and fellow town meeting members, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends adoption of Article Two, appropriate for youth health initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fischetti. Discussion, the main motion under Article Two.
Moderator?
Yes, in the back. I see you're in a row, not reserved, a town meeting member, so you are a Needham resident or registered voter?
I am actually a town meeting member, sir. I just didn't.
Well, what are you doing back there? You gotta, you gotta move, you gotta, we got, look at this, we got spaces here, you gotta come down here, okay?
I will do so, sir. Okay. My name is Georgina Arieta Rutnick. I'm Precinct J. And so I guess I just wanted a little bit of clarification. The article states appropriate for youth, youth mental health, I mean, I'm sorry, youth health initiatives. And so my understanding is that the allocation of these funds from the Children's Hospital taxes essentially is for youth health initiatives. But in the description, it seems to be specifically targeted for mental health initiatives. And I want to say that I am completely for this and I work in the public school, so I understand the need for this. It is desperately needed. But I guess I'm just wondering, this specifically seems to me for mental health and I'm wondering if, in the future, is it going to be for youth health in general? You know, like it could be for obesity or for anti-smoking or for anti-vaping. This is specifically, it looks to me for mental health and that's really the, what I'm in favor of. And my other part of the question is the part where it says an outreach clinician would split time between the Needham Free Public Library, Park and Rec, other community locations. Does that mean their office space will be in those locations or this is where they're going to speak to children or find children to service? I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. So two questions, I think, for the proponents. Mr. Keane, to respond to the members' two questions about the main motion under Article Two.
Thank you, Georgina. Those are good questions. HHS Health and Human Services recommended this option for this year. And yes, it could change in other years as other needs arise and as funds become available. As for the placement of the personnel we're hiring, they will co-locate, they will be in certain places, a certain part of the time as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keane. Discussion, the main motion under Article Two. Yes, sir. Mr. Albert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Alpert, Precinct C. I have a question which may go beyond the four corners and if you so will, I will understand. The article states that these are payments in lieu of personal property taxes. I would like to ask whether we have a similar agreement with regard to payments in lieu of real property taxes and whether, like this payment in lieu, those are also a fixed-dollar amount that are not tied to inflation or other increases over the years.
Thank you, Mr. Alpert. Sure. I mean, the article does, does mention personal property taxes, but I think that's fair within the scope and certainly the community agreement has been referenced. So I'll direct that question to the proponents. Mr. Keane, to respond to Mr. Alpert's question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I could answer the question, but we should hear from the eloquent words of Kate Fitzpatrick. If you recognize her.
What's, you want to?
Recognize Kate Fitzpatrick.
Call her Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Please.
Okay, I can do that. Ms. Fitzpatrick is our town manager and she's not a resident of the town of Needham. For that reason, she requires your consent to address this body. I would ask your unanimous consent to allow Ms. Fitzpatrick, our town manager, to address town meeting. Hearing no objection, I find unanimous consent. Ms. Fitzpatrick, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There's a companion agreement to the host community agreement, which is a pilot agreement. And in the pilot agreement, Children's Hospital has agreed to pay what is essentially, what it would have paid in taxes if it were a taxable entity. Thank you, sir.
Sorry, did everyone hear that? Because I couldn't hear it too well. So Ms. Fitzpatrick, just make sure you're right in front of that microphone because you kind of trailed off a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
And we'll turn the volume up, we'll turn the volume up to 11.
Very unusual for me not to be heard, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. I'm sorry to make you repeat yourself, but if you wouldn't mind.
No problem. There is a companion agreement to this host community agreement with the $200,000 in it, and that is a pilot agreement, a payment in lieu of taxes agreement, in which Children's Hospital agreed to pay what is essentially the value of what it would have paid in taxes if it was a taxable entity. So there's a pilot payment that will be made once there is occupancy at the surgical center. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick. It was better the second time around, anyway. It was just fantastic. Thank you. Discussion, under the main motion under Article Two. Hearing none, we come to the vote. Under Article Two, Mr. Kevin Keane moves to appropriate for youth health initiatives, Children's Hospital Community Benefit Payment. The text of the main motion is identical to Article Two in your special town meeting warrant. On the main motion, majority required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The ayes have it, unanimous vote. The motion carries and I declare Article Two disposed of. This brings us to Article Four. Under Article Four, Mr. Kevin Keane moves that the town appropriate for community opioid settlement fund planning. The text of the main motion is identical to Article Four in your warrant. On the main motion, speaking on behalf of the proponents, which is the select board, Mr. Keane.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, last spring, at the special town meeting, you approved the creation of an opioid settlement stabilization fund to automatically receive and hold payments from the national settlement with opioid distributors. Needham anticipates receiving approximately $1.8 million in dispersments over the next 15 years. And while you are at it, last spring, you also approved the initial dispersments of $217,288, the first transfer from the settlement into this fund. These funds must be used on programming for strategies to address opioid use, prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery. Today, with this article, Article Four, we seek from you an appropriation of $145,000 from this fund. Your approval would allow Needham Health Department to undertake a number of projects. First, to conduct a valid and in-depth and inclusive public engagement process to learn from the community and affected groups. Second, use the information collected to construct a sensible five-year strategic plan. And third, when appropriate, measure progress and assess effectiveness of the town's efforts. And those, these three parts are projected to cost $90,000. And fourth, we seek to immediately address certain priority items such as making opioid overdose reversal kits available and hiring a peer recovery coach. The overdose rescue kit sandbox would be provisioned with naloxone, better known by its brand name Narcan, and mounted alongside the AEDs in town buildings. We anticipate this costing $3,000. The other component, a peer recovery coach, is a non-clinical professional who has lived experience with addiction and engages, educates, and supports individuals in recovery. This position is projected to cost $52,000. All these proposed measures are sensible and will go far towards protecting Needham residents. The select board recommends adoption of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keane. Delivering the recommendation of the Finance Committee in the main motion under Article Four, Ms. Carol Fischetti, member of the Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow town meeting members, good evening once again. Article Four seeks to appropriate $145,000 from the opioid settlement stabilization fund to be utilized for the purpose of preventing substance misuse, harm reduction, and supporting the treatment and recovery of individuals who misuse opioids. As Mr. Keane stated, the, last May, special town meeting established the opioid settlement stabilization funds to accept these legal settlements. The appropriation of $145,000, as Mr. Keane mentioned, will be used to hire consultants to really determine a pathway and a strategic plan for how these funds over a, you know, multi-year period should be best utilized in the town. And very importantly, that one consultant will develop the strategic plan, but the other consultants will really focus on surveying the community and hearing from the community what the community believes those priorities are. $52,000 will go to hire immediately a peer recovery coach, which is a part-time position, and $3,000 to deploy overdose reversal kits to be co-located with AED devices in town buildings. We had quite a discussion with the Health and Human Services Group and after that discussion, we came to an agreement that the Finance Committee believes that these funds are being used in line with the original intent of the opioid settlement stabilization fund and the hiring of consultants to determine a long-term strategic plan for best use of the funds will serve the town well into the future. Mr. Moderator and fellow town meeting members, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article Four. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fischetti. Discussion, the main motion under Article Four. Hearing none, we come to the vote. Under Article Four, Mr. Kevin Keane moves for the appropriation of community opioid settlement fund planning, the amount in the appropriation, $145,000. Text to the main motion identical to Article Four in your warrant. This is a appropriation from a stabilization fund and for that reason requires a two-thirds vote for passage. On the main motion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The ayes have it, unanimous vote. The motion carries and I declare Article Four disposed of. Under Article Fourteen, Ms. Kathy Dowd moves that the town vote to amend general bylaws, non-criminal dispositions. The text of the main motion under Article Fourteen is identical to Article Fourteen in your warrant. On the main motion, speaking on behalf of the sponsors, which is the select board, Ms. Kathy Dowd, member of the select board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, perhaps some of you have a place in your house where you put things that you think you might use someday. And perhaps over the years, the number of those things have grown and maybe you don't like to go to that place and see what all is there. It could be a drawer, an attic, a basement. You should think about the non-criminal dispositions in this way. Have that vision in your head that these have been there for a long time and over time, things have been added and they haven't been rationalized. And so our town staff has done amazing work in cleaning this up and doing some housekeeping as good government. So that is what this article is seeking to do. The non-criminal dispositions include a lot of nuisances, a lot of things that may cause small harms, and the idea here is to deter this behavior with a system of fines. We are not interested in fining anyone, we are only interested in deterring the behavior. But in order to do that, people need to understand what is prohibited and they need to understand what the consequences would be. And so we have come with a rationalized set of fines, a tiered structure of $100, $200, and $300. We have clarified who is the enforcement agent. We have gotten rid of some outdated language. You will no longer be allowed to graze your cattle here. You will no longer be able to coast on the streets. We don't know what that means, but you won't be able to do it. You will not be able to sell cigarettes by machine. And there's something about dogs and heat, but I don't really want to go there. And then there is a bunch of revised language, grammatical things, moving things to tables. So it should be rationalized, more easy to understand and to follow. And the select board unanimously recommends adoption of Article Fourteen.
Thank you, Ms. Dowd. Delivering the recommendation of the Finance Committee on the main motion under Article Fourteen, Mr. Joshua Levy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And by the way, Mr. Moderator, do you know what a fee and a levy have in common?
I'm sorry?
Do you know what a fee and a levy have in common? They're both taxing.
I couldn't hear him. What did he say? What did he say?
Oh, I'll move on. Okay. So by a vote of eight to zero, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article Fourteen. Non-criminal dispositions are fines that the town can issue in the event of an associated violation of the town bylaws. The state limits the maximum monetary fine to $300 per violation and a violation can be defined as either a singular event or as recurring events. As part of its deliberations, the Finance Committee focused on ensuring internal consistency of the proposed changes and did not deliberate upon the particular value of the select board fines, but behind me, you can see a summary of them and I'll illustrate a couple of examples in a bit. The article seeks to achieve three main goals: to organize the non-criminal dispositions into a single table within the bylaw. Currently, non-criminal dispositions appear both scattered throughout the bylaw and in a schedule of penalties in Section Eight of the bylaw. In some cases, the non-criminal dispositions appear in one of these sections but not in the other. In other cases, there are conflicting penalties where they appear in both but have different amounts. So by reorganizing the non-criminal dispositions, the conflicts can be resolved and they can be easier to find in the future and to change also if we want to. The second goal is to standardize the values of monetary fines. As Ms. Dowd mentioned, it's currently a schedule of, or the proposed schedule is at $100, $200, and $300 depending upon the violation. The existing schedules vary depending upon the fine. So in some cases, it's a fixed fine for the first and each subsequent offense. In other cases, the existing bylaw has a warning prescribed for the first time, then $50 for the second, $200 for the third, $300 for the fourth, and so on. So this standardizes the form of the violations. The third goal is to eliminate non-criminal dispositions whose purpose is no longer necessary or clear to the select board or the enforcing entities. So now we'll go through. So now we'll go through six examples to illustrate these cases. In row three behind me is an example of a non-criminal disposition whose monetary fine is proposed simply to increase. So all buildings are assigned a street number by the Select Board, and owners or occupants must show that street number on the building. So for each day that the number is not displayed, the fire chief, building inspector, or their designee can issue a fine of $20 per day currently. The proposed amendment would increase that to $100 per day. In row four, there's an example of an inconsistency in the current bylaw. So during construction, maintenance, or repair work, to do that in a public way without a permit is punishable by a fine listed in the text of the bylaw of $100, and in the schedule of penalties by $300. The proposed amendment would resolve that inconsistency to the lower fine of $100 per day. Row seven is an example of an existing fine with a graduated fine schedule. So violating a water ban or failing to prevent a backflow of an irrigation system has a graduated system with a warning on the first violation, $50 on the second day of the violation, $200 on the third, and $300 on the fourth. The proposed amendment would change this to $100 per offense, bearing in mind that an offense such as watering the lawn during a water ban could occur multiple times per day. Row 10 is an example of a non-criminal disposition whose monetary fine is simply proposed to decrease. So littering or disposing of refuse on any land sidewalk, pond, or other waterway is currently punishable by a fine of $200 per offense. The Select Board proposes to reduce that fine to $100 per offense. Row 11 is an example of an existing disposition that is proposed to be deleted. So sale of cigarettes by machine is outlawed by the Commonwealth, and so the Select Board believes that non-criminal disposition in this schedule fines is not necessary anymore. Lastly, row 19 is an example of a prohibition on the dealing of secondhand merchandise without a permit. There actually is no associated fee currently in the bylaws, and the Select Board proposes a penalty of $100 per violation. The Finance Committee believes that resolving inconsistencies of non-criminal dispositions and organizing them in a clear table is a benefit to the public and to the operations of the town, and the Finance Committee respectfully recommends the town meeting adopt Article 14.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Discussion, the main motion under Article 14.
Mr. Moderator. Evan Rouse, Precinct D, speaking against. I mean, I applaud the general housekeeping nature of this, and I agree with that part, but as I looked at some of the actual fines and compared them to the existing bylaw, the changes sometimes seem pretty draconian. For example, 3.7.4, which includes dogs chasing cars, not something you'd think would be a huge problem in the town in general.
Hold on, sir. Can we put that summary back up? Just I think it might, if you're going to refer to one, I just thought it might be helpful to have that up there, the spreadsheet.
Okay, thank you.
There you go.
So the current fine is $25, and so it's now going up to $300, which is a 12x increase that just seemed, you know, pretty harsh. And also, I'd also mention that, you know, graduated fines are there for a reason, that somebody might not have realized something was illegal, and so replacing them with, you know, $100, $200, and $300 fines again seems a little harsh to me. Putting everything in a table makes perfect sense, but I don't understand why we didn't just keep, you know, the existing fines or numbers that were reasonably close to the existing fines. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Discussion, the main motion under Article 14.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Artie Crocker, Precinct I. Just a question on the one related to garbage and refuse. The question is, I mean, we're decreasing the fine. Now, is that, I mean, I'm being a little facetious here, but is that because people are being fined and not paying it, we're not getting raised enough money? I mean, why would we be decreasing a fine on people disposing of garbage where they're not supposed to? If they're not doing it, I would think we'd leave it alone. So just curious why we're decreasing it.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Crocker. Question for the proponents, which I will direct to them. Ms. Dowd, to respond to the member's question about the decreasing of fines, and he cites the disposal of garbage and refuse as an example. Ms. Dowd, to respond to the member's question.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the tiered structure is as follows. $100 is a violation of general inconvenience, and that would fall in that category. $200 is a violation that carries some risk of harm, and $300 is a violation that may cause lasting or irreparable harm. That was how we categorized them. So something that would be an inconvenience would be $100, or a nuisance.
Mr. Crocker?
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Crocker.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, I saw something specific. It said going from 200 to 100. So it feels like I'm missing something here. What was just said versus what we were told is shown on the screen.
Right. So, I mean, I can ask Ms. Dowd to clarify. I think what I heard was they came up with a scale, and they slotted various conduct into this scale, and this one got slotted into that container. You know what I mean? That can. That receptacle. But I'll ask Ms. Dowd to make sure that that discussion, or that that interpretation is correct. I think that's what I heard, but I understand you'd like some clarification. So Ms. Dowd, if you would resume the microphone and just clarify for Mr. Crocker, please, and town meeting.
Yes, that is correct, that that violation would be considered a general inconvenience, and therefore $100.
Very well. So further discussion, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Karen Shapiro, Precinct A, and I had a question on 3.1.7 regarding yard sales, or secondhand merchandise. How does that affect neighborhood yard sales, for example?
Very well. Fine, Ms. Shapiro, I'll direct that question to the proponents and ask if they would describe the intent. Ms. Dowd, to respond to the member's question. The question is secondhand merchandise, and how does that apply, if at all, to yard sales?
That will not apply to yard sales. It only applies to brick and mortar shops.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shapiro. Discussion, main motion under Article, yes, in the back, I see a hand. Yes.
Glenn Mulno, Precinct I. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just have a question for the board. One of the things that concerns me as I walk around town, several of the sidewalks, in particular, I'm aware of several places on Webster Street where shrubs or other things are overgrowing the sidewalk, and you can barely pass over it. I can only imagine if I was somebody in a wheelchair or another assistive device, I would not be able to pass these. So my question is, do we have anything in these bylaws about that kind of sidewalk blockage? And if not, is that something we could consider later, not part of this?
Very well, Mr. Mulno. I will, I will ask, we can't legislate, as you, I think, or anticipated, we can't legislate new things here that aren't within the notice, but certainly it's a fair question, and I'll allow it, because there is, there is discussion of sidewalks and obstructions with snow and ice, I believe, in this article. Ms. Dowd, to respond to the member's question regarding overgrowth of shrubberies from private property into sidewalks.
So we do have a bylaw, 22516, on street intersections, and that is something that you can report to the town.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again? I don't know what it is but the sound, but maybe pull that microphone a little closer. I'm just having trouble hearing it, so.
Okay. So we do have one, is that better?
Yes.
22516 on street intersections, and so the overgrown shrubbery on the sidewalk can be reported to the town.
Okay. Further discussion under Article 14, the main motion. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Montgomery, Precinct J. I have a question about the mechanics of this. Am I correct in believing that in future years, we would not need as a body to see this chart as it gets updated? That's part of the whole desire of this, is to simplify updating. And secondly, my other question is, is, in the aggregate, all of these various infractions over the years, is this any kind of significant source of income for the town? And is what we're doing tonight, anticipating changing, whatever that might be, in terms of, are we trying to get more money? Is it any money to begin with? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Two questions from the member. I'll direct them to the proponents first. The first question is about future modifications of the content of this list of bylaws, and will town meetings see it again? And the second has to do with, what is the amount of income that, or revenue that this generates for the town as is, and what is the impact of modifications proposed under Article 14? To respond to those two questions, Ms. Dowd.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, town meeting would have to vote on these again if we were to change the bylaws. It's an important function of town meeting to vote on any bylaw changes, so it would come back to town meeting. The revenue that we get today is de minimis, and I expect that that would not change. This is not a revenue-raising exercise here. The idea is deterrence, and, you know, to make this clear so people understand what the rules are so that they don't violate the rules, not to impose fines.
Thank you, Ms. Dowd. Further discussion under Article 14.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Oscar Mertz, Precinct I. Just a point of clarification on the discharge of water for $200. Just curious what that might be.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mertz, discharge of water, but I didn't catch your question. I'm so sorry. I was looking to make sure it was up here.
I'm just curious what that actually covers.
Oh, what that covers.
What are we being fined for if we leave the garden hose on, or what's it for?
Gotcha. What's the conduct? Gotcha. Sure. Question for the proponents on the conduct that could run afoul of discharge of water. Ms. Dowd?
So that one is directed against people who have a sump pump in their basement, and they are discharging the water into the street.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you for answering that. Ms. Dowd, further discussion in the main motion under Article 14.
Moderator.
Yes, I heard, yes. This spotlight is like right in my eyes. Elon Barzilai, Precinct H, move the question.
Mr. Barzilai moves the question, which, as you know, is not debatable and requires a two-thirds vote for passage. Affirmative action on the motion, we'll terminate debate and bring the main motion under Article 14 to an immediate vote. Negative action on the motion will allow further discussion and debate to continue. We come immediately to the vote on the motion, the motion with the previous question, this depositized motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, two-thirds declared on a voice vote. The motion carries. It brings us to an immediate vote on Article 14. Under Article 14, Ms. Kathy Dowd moves to amend the general bylaws of the town of Needham for non-criminal dispositions. A majority is required for passage. This is an amendment of Needham's general bylaws. The general bylaws, as you heard during debate, are something peculiarly within your power to enact and amend. A majority is required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, majority declared on a voice vote. The motion carries, and I declare Article 14 disposed of. The next item of business is Article 15. Under Article 15, Ms. Mary Ann Cooley moves to amend the general bylaws, specialized energy code. The text of the main motion is identical to Article 15 in your warrant. Two items I wanted to explain first that lie not within the main motion but in the article information section. You will see in the article information section a statement that says, at the bottom of the article information, immediately following the warrant article, it says, "For other municipal buildings, complying with the specialized code for new construction is consistent with the vote of town meeting in October 21 declaring a climate emergency and directing the town to reduce its greenhouse gas emissions." Just for purposes of clarity, and I consulted with town council, of course, and you may remember, town meeting did not declare a climate emergency in October 2021. It recommended to the Board of Selectmen that the Board of Selectmen declare a climate emergency, and the text of that motion was very, very clear on that point in several places, and the records of the town show that. So just a clarification to make sure that it is clear that that statement is incorrect. And I've talked with town council to confirm that. We're not aware of a vote by the Board of, of the Select Board declaring a climate emergency, but the Board has taken multiple steps to address climate issues, including through the work of a committee that it appointed. That's number one. Number two, it's important that you understand, whenever we see something that says, "This article must be adopted as is," without applying amendments or conditions, that raises serious questions, because town meeting, of course, has the inherent power to amend and change matters that come before it. Again, it's a matter of law on which I consulted with town council, because any time I see something that infringes on town meeting's power, I want to understand the legal basis for that. And after consulting with town council, that appears to be derived from a body of law that has grown up around the state building code and action that has been taken in the courts and by the Attorney General, the Commonwealth, which has taken, both of which have taken the position that the state building code is uniform and cannot be modified by local action. And so, in a nutshell, the basis for that statement, which I think needs to be clear to you as legislators, is drawn from state authority, Supreme Judicial Court case, and action by the Attorney General involving analogous situations where towns modified state building code content and was rejected by the Attorney General's office. So I wanted those two things to be clear before we started, and having addressed them, I would recognize Ms. Cooley, speaking on behalf of the sponsors, the Select Board, on the main motion under Article 15.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I'm hoping that you've all taken advantage of the good materials provided and prepared on the town meeting website. I'm unable to give you a full tutorial in 12 minutes. In 2021, town meeting passed a resolution which recognized, quote, "That we are in a climate and ecological emergency that threatens our town, state, nation, and all humanity," unquote, and asked the Select Board to, quote, "Prioritize projects that reduce the town's greenhouse gas emissions and biodiversity loss," unquote. Although I'm part of the Select Board that had an aversion to the word "emergency," the Select Board understood the direction from town meeting clearly, and we have prioritized climate projects. We appointed the Climate Action Planning Committee, and the draft climate action plan will be released later this fall. We expect to have a sustainability We expect to have a sustainability manager on staff soon. With that context, the purpose of this article will adopt the Opt-In Specialized Building Code to further reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. This will have the effect of larger homes being required to be net zero after July 2024 permitting. Needham adopted the Stretch Energy Code back in 2019. At the time we adopted it, 10 years after we first considered it, every town around us had adopted it earlier, in some cases, much earlier. And as a result, builders in town were already long since building to the Stretch Code. It made their lives easier. Today's not 2009, or even 2019. The Specialized Code applies to new construction only. It starts with the current Stretch Code, which applies to all construction projects, and then it specifies three requirements if a non-electric house is built. Builders must pre-wire the house for all-electric. It must be solar-ready. And if the build is a mixed-fuel house, then solar panels must be installed. For homes with greater than 4,000 square feet of conditioned space, there must be enough solar or wind to offset the fossil fuels, bringing the home to net zero. We know from our townwide inventory of greenhouse gases that our buildings are the greatest source of greenhouse gas emissions. To decrease the town's carbon footprint, we must make a difference in this area. There's a great deal of built inventory, so the one place we can make an impact is new housing. The FinCom opposes this article. A significant part of the negative recommendation is the question of timing. They would prefer to see this article brought to you in the spring. What will change between now and the spring? Approximately 45 to 50 more homes will be permitted if we continue at the average pace of the past five years. Those homes, depending on builder, may or may not be future-proof. We heard that builders are not worried about the new code itself. They understand what is expected, and several builders are already building electric homes. Their customers are asking for them. Builders' concern is with Eversource. That's a common concern. The town worries about Eversource all the time. We worry about Eversource's customer service and ability to provision. We worry about their ability to let people know if there's sufficient power in the street to support large electric homes. I hear and understand that concern. It's a concern now. It will be a concern next spring. It will be a concern next fall. The town is committed to working in partnership with our legislators to raise this issue. Interestingly, we are not currently hearing screams of pain from the four towns that have already implemented this new code. And frankly, I thought we would be hearing about this issue already from them. In speaking with builders, I learned that the market in Needham has shifted again. It used to be that prices were pretty equal between the value a builder placed on a lot and the value a buyer might purchase a home for. Many sellers liked the offers from a builder because they were frequently cash, without contingencies, and no bargaining about anything. Now, there is such competition from builders that the value to a builder is greater than the value of the house to another purchaser. The system in Needham produces tear downs by design. Builders are also concerned that there are elements of consumer choice being taken away by accepting the Specialized Code. If we accept this code and a builder builds a house fueled by fossil fuels, then the house will be required to host solar panels, to offset their energy usage. If a builder builds for both fossil fuels and the requirements of this new Specialized Code, that is somewhat more expensive than building a traditional fossil fuel home or an all-electric home. The Finance Committee has also referenced the Home Builders and Remodelers Association of Massachusetts Study, also known as the MIT Midwair Study. At the press conference for the study's release, co-author Justin Steele, Associate Professor of Law and Urban Planning at MIT, stated that adoption of the Opt-In Specialized Code is crucial to helping Massachusetts achieve statutory emissions reductions. So this is an important part of our strategy. Questions have also been asked about municipal projects. There are no municipal projects that will be permitted in the very near future. When they are permitted, we expect them to be constructed under the Specialized Code. Remember, at the beginning of my talk, you asked the town to lead in this area, so we will be using that code. The Massachusetts School Building Authority has changed their reimbursement policy so that there is no longer any reimbursement for buildings constructed to the Stretch Code. Instead, a 3% credit will be given for schools constructed using the Specialized Code. Needham's forecasted costs for Mitchell and Pollard include the Specialized Code already. Our architects have told us that the projects will save money by going all-electric under the current incentive structure. Our newest commercial buildings that have been building to a stricter code have been building to a stricter code than they had to for a while. TripAdvisor built to lead Platinum in 2015, four years before Needham even adopted the Stretch Code. The IDC building at 140 Kendrick is voluntarily converting to a net-zero building. This code would not even apply to them. And Children's Hospital is being built to a standard that is 20% more efficient than required by the Stretch Code. You might ask what the building inspector thinks. He thinks it's up to you to say what code you want enforced for Needham, and he will implement that. Where there are any questions, they will be sorted out. It would've been nice if things were perfectly clear from the get-go, and he expects they will become more evident over the next several months as other towns are using this code. But he tells me he also feels there's a need for this code. And so, the issue for Town Meeting is those 45 to 50 new houses. Will we act now to make a difference where we can reduce our greenhouse gas emissions? Or will we take no action? The decision is up to Town Meeting. Accepting the Specialized Code also means we will automatically receive new versions of the code, just as accepting the Stretch Code did. The Select Board respectfully asks for your vote in the affirmative, which will result in the additional layer of building code taking effect in 2014. 2024, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley. Delivering the recommendation of the Finance Committee, Ms. Louise Miller, the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, fellow Town Meeting members. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends that Town Meeting not adopt Article 15, amend general bylaws, Specialized Energy Code. Now, I believe we can all reasonably agree that climate change is real. It's also true that the state has adopted new greenhouse gas limits and climate goals for 2025 to 2050. The question today is whether Needham should adopt the Massachusetts Specialized Energy Code as a bylaw now, at this special Town Meeting. There are currently three codes that govern energy efficiency in Massachusetts: a base code, which was recently updated, a stretch code, which requires higher energy efficiency and which is automatically in effect in Needham, since we voted to adopt it in 2019, and an Opt-In Code, which is a Specialized Energy Code with even higher energy efficiency standards. We are told that the new Opt-In Specialized Energy Code was created to ensure that new construction meets state greenhouse gas limits and climate goals for 2025 to 2050. However, it is not the mandated code. Instead, the state created three levels of energy efficiency codes, codes which will be updated, presumably over time, to require higher and higher levels of energy efficiency. The Finance Committee has voted to recommend that this article not be adopted because we believe that the consequences of adopting the Opt-In Specialized Energy Code need to be determined, analyzed, and presented to the citizens of Needham and to Town Meeting. This past Friday, the state released a report by Climate Chief Hofer. This is a new position created by Governor Healey, calling for an analysis of the state investment needed to achieve the state's greenhouse gas emission reductions to meet the state's required target of net zero by 2050. The report does not have a cost for the decarbonization of Massachusetts, but estimates that the total cost for the U.S. to be in the range of $25 trillion to $30 trillion. The report also estimates that 8% to 30% of the cost of decarbonization for Massachusetts will be funded through various federal programs. This leaves 70% to 92% of the cost of decarbonization in Massachusetts to be borne by the state. The state's climate chief indicates that the cost analysis for the cost of decarbonization in Massachusetts will be complete by the end of year 2024, a little over one year from now. So why is this important? Because it addresses the infrastructure needs of the state for Massachusetts' decarbonization goals. There are currently discussions at the state level of the amount of infrastructure maintenance and improvements that need to be made, and to which infrastructure? The sufficiency of the electric grid to support the increased demand. The state is also evaluating decarbonization in light of competing goals. The cost of the infrastructure upgrades and the potential for an energy infrastructure monopoly are being evaluated. The affordability of energy for residential, commercial, and industrial users. As monopolies are created, costs go up. And economic competitiveness with other states is also being reviewed. For Needham, what we also will need to look at is our competitiveness with other communities for certain types of businesses. There are certain types of businesses that have made statements about the cost of Opt-In Specialized Energy Code on their facilities, whether or not they would be able to build facilities in certain communities. And we can choose to not have those types of businesses in Needham, but we need to have a discussion about that, a discussion about what our choice is. Climate Chief Hofer also spent part of the report outlining another crucial need for success of decarbonization, the need for specialized labor. And I quote, "The Massachusetts Clean Energy Workforce will need to grow by an additional 29,700 full-time equivalent workers to meet the Commonwealth's 2030 greenhouse gas emissions reduction mandate." 29,700. That's almost the entire Needham population. These are additional full-time workers to make the program work. Again, it doesn't mean that the program will not work, but there are going to be costs associated with the program. So that brings me back again to Needham. Once adopted, the Specialized Energy Code updates will automatically be approved. So we're told today that it only applies to certain residential and commercial new construction. But that's today. What is the state's plan for future updates? We ask that question. We don't know right now. We were told that the state needs to find out what works and what doesn't before the next update. That may be true. But we need to figure out, what would that mean for Needham? What would the next level of energy efficiency look like? To what homes or commercial buildings will it apply? Will it extend to renovations? Just because it doesn't today doesn't mean it won't in the future. Will some houses become obsolete and be torn down because of energy efficiency? And those would be homes like mine, and I think at least some of you, and certainly many residents of Needham, homes that were built with oil tanks in the basement and then converted to gas, homes with radiators and forced hot water, or forced steam. The Finance Committee had other questions as well. Chapter 8 of the General Laws of 2021, Section 6, states, which is the general law that enables these regulations and the proposed codes, states that the Secretary shall establish programs to reduce emissions of greenhouse gases and promulgate regulations regarding sources or categories of sources that emit greenhouse gases in order to achieve the limits and sublimits and implement plans required by the chapter. But it goes on to say that the regulations shall achieve required emissions reductions equitably and in a manner that protects low- and moderate-income persons and environmental justice populations. Recently, a Massachusetts community voted not to adopt the Opt-In Specialized Code due to concerns about the effect on the cost of building affordable housing, specifically workforce housing, which is housing for those who work in the community. That is an important analysis that needs to be done in Needham. What will the cost to residents be? What will the cost to economic development? The cost to resiliency? The cost to affordable housing? And the cost to municipal construction? We have none of these answers. We have asked questions, and we're told that additional costs would be offset over the life cycle of building, or state grants would offset additional costs. No numbers were provided. The Finance Committee has not had sufficient time, nor have the residents and Town Meeting had sufficient time to consider and determine the consequences of adopting this article. That is not to say that we would not adopt it after analysis. It just means that we need time to ask questions, receive data, analyze the data, and determine what is best for Needham. For these reasons, the Finance Committee recommends that Town Meeting vote not to adopt the Opt-In Specialized Code today and that this article be postponed until town-wide discussions have taken place, analysis has been complete, the state has completed its study, or has at least made sufficient progress that we have some answers, and questions that have been posed are able to be answered. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, fellow Town Meeting members.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Discussion on the main motion under Article 15. Yes. Right over here.
Kate Weinerad, Precinct E. I would like to just say that the purpose of the FinCom, as stated on the website, is to report its recommendations as to each article that it finds to have financial implication. I found, Mr. Moderator, that that discussion by the Finance Committee was way outside the scope of the article and the bounds of what we asked them to do. It was conjecture. It was hypothesis. Who knows what's going to happen? This might happen. We don't know if that might happen. Does the Finance Committee today have a view on the financial implication of this article? And if the answer is no, we don't, then that's it. I think that the suggestions and the hearsay and the just general questioning of anything that could be related to anything is not the scope of their job and unhelpful to this body.
Discussion under Article 15.
I can use this one. Jim Rootneck, Precinct J. I have three points. One is that the articles I'm reading are saying that we've already crossed the tipping point, that 80 degrees on last Saturday is totally bizarre. And the science experts, who are usually understated, are just like, they don't know what's going on. It's a whole new world. And it may already be too late, but we have to do whatever we can. The second point is, the argument of the tobacco companies has always been, we need more research. We need more time. We need more research. Meanwhile, people died of lung cancer. I think we have enough information. This has worked well. We need it. The third is, I totally agree. I think the Select Board was elected and represents the town, and the Finance Committee does not. They have a very specific role to tell us the financial impact of what we're about to vote on. I didn't hear any numbers, and I think they went way beyond that mandate. Thank you.
Well, in case this comes up again, I decide what's beyond the scope. Not a Town Meeting member, okay? Everyone understand that? I mean, that's, I listen very carefully to what people say, and sometimes I give people latitude, more latitude than they're entitled to. But I decide what's within the scope and who's acting within their legal mandate and who's not. So, within these four walls, that's my job. But thanks for your advice. Discussion. Right in front?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Frederica Lalan, Precinct
Frederica Lalan, Precinct J. I have several points of information. How many am I allowed?
Well, you have five minutes.
Okay, great.
So, but I mean, let's be courteous to everybody else.
I will ask them quickly, and then as they can be answered, that would be great. I'm curious about the rate of new builds in these other towns that have adopted it. I know our rate is quite high, and the types of homes that we are building in Needham are much larger than other towns, so I'm wondering what the comparison is on that. Can we opt out easily? Should changes be made in the code at the state level? Are we able to get out of it, or is it going to be like getting out of a marriage with Tom Cruise? I can't read what I wrote there. Can we opt out? Oh, and if the state does end up taking on, and I perhaps misunderstood this portion of it, but if the state does take on then the, I guess, paying for whatever it is that they end up mandating, are we then still on the hook for the bill? Or does that get passed on to them at that point? And then would there be, I don't know, I'm kind of unclear on the financing of it, should it go to that place? Thank you.
Okay, I'll ask the proponents to respond to your questions. Ms. Cooley?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Frederica. So, the first question was about the rate of new build compared to other communities. I don't have any hard data here. From looking at the list of the 23 communities who have already adopted this, representing some 22% of the state's residents, okay, a lot of those are also in communities that are undergoing a lot of rebuilds like we are. Is it exactly comparable to us? I don't know, but I presume that it's somewhat similar, okay? You asked if we could opt out easily. If something happened and it became apparent that there were cries of pain from all over the state, we could bring back a motion to town meeting, and town meeting can again vote to opt out, just like you're taking a vote today to opt in. And we would be backed out of the specialized code, and we would be back at the stretch code unless we chose to vote to not adopt the stretch code, in which case we'd be back to the base code. You have to at least do the base code, okay? But it's a vote of town meeting to do it, so you vote in, you vote out. All right. The last question, I think, related to the state. The state, as Ms. Miller said, is undergoing a question and looking at infrastructure. There is a lot of work to be done to decarbonize the state, but probably the most immediate thing, frankly, that we're going to see from the state will be that the state is re-looking at the Green Communities Act. They're planning to retool that act so that they can gear it to those communities who have adopted the specialized code, and then we might be eligible for additional grants from the state there.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley. Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Allison Borelli, Precinct F, fellow town meeting members. I have some concerns that we're implementing this too fast, and I actually have four main areas of concern on this article. Infrastructure, consumer choice, affordable housing, and the speed at which this is moving. Infrastructure. From what I understand, that while ever source says they can supply the town, it's my understanding that that is general statement and not neighborhood-specific. I've heard from builders and homeowners that there are areas of the town that currently do not have the capacity for all-electric houses, and in order to get that capacity, it would take time and potentially be costly. Because of that, there are many properties that could decrease in value because they will not have the infrastructure to support development. Never mind that it's unclear what would happen if there were long-term power outages or lengthy cold spells at some of these locations. In my profession, I know of homeowners who, in their attempt to electrify, still have to have fossil fuel backup systems because their heat pumps cannot keep up with our coldest winter days. Consumer choice. As a realtor, I sell a lot of new construction, both buyers and representing sellers. I have never had a customer ask for an all-electric house. One of the first questions asked when somebody comes into one of our homes is, do we have gas? And if there isn't gas in the home, the second question is, is it's on the street? These consumers are asking for the option of gas cooking, gas fireplaces, and gas heat. And while I understand that that is an option, but then that would trigger the need for solar panels, which is a greater expense, and not at the consumer's choice. Affordable housing. I'm going to reference the same study that was up on the screen a few minutes ago. The Home Builders and Remodelers Association of Massachusetts released a study. As was mentioned, it was by the MIT Center for Real Estate and Wentworth Institute of Technology that analyzed the building costs and housing affordability, along with the potential effects of this opt-in stretch code. They concluded that without additional incentives or financial supports, the more stringent building requirements will likely push homeownership out of reach for many more families in Massachusetts. We are in a housing crisis. The research identified multiple obstacles hampering the construction of more affordable, energy-efficient housing, including permitting delays, lack of clarity on financial incentives, a shortage of workers skilled in green home building, continued supply chain issues, and a lack of public awareness of the economic benefits of energy-efficient homes. The opt-in stretch code also impacts new multifamily properties, as we saw on the slides, for 12,000 square feet. And at a time we are actively seeking affordable housing options, this opt-in stretch code could have the adverse impact of developers seeking multifamily projects less than the 12,000 square feet, or bypass, to bypass these stricter codes, or frankly, seek to build elsewhere. In fact, this report states that low-income renters may need additional support from the state's Home Energy Assistance Program as large multifamily buildings become all-electric to pay for the additional costs of electricity. And lastly, the speed at which this is moving. The most recent version of the stretch code just went into effect this year. I was at the Select Board's public hearing, and there was confusion by members of the public as to the impact and application of the opt-in stretch code. And it wasn't until today, after I contacted a building code expert to ask some questions, that I learned that wood-burning stoves and wood-burning fireplaces would make a building considered mixed fuel and would trigger that lane of the opt-in stretch code. I am left wondering what other impacts we have not discussed, including the impact packs on commercial and municipal buildings. For all of these reasons and more, I am not in favor of the opt-in stretch code at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Borelli. Discussion, the main motion.
Stephen Frail, Precinct G. What do we know? What do we know? We know that climate change is real. Scientists are saying, we've got six years to turn the corner. If we don't turn the corner in six years, the 1.5 degrees Celsius of warming target that the scientists have been saying is where things start to get really hairy, we're going to miss that. We have six years. It's time to stop digging. This is a very measured article that's designed to get us to stop digging the hole. It does nothing to remove carbon from our existing homes, but it says for the new homes, we can stop putting carbon in them. Now, here's the other thing we know. This is data that hopefully most of the town meeting has read because it's up on the town meeting website. There's over 32.8 million square feet of net zero and net-zero-ready buildings in Massachusetts today, and it's growing exponentially. For the 7 million gross square, 7 million gross square feet of buildings where they have cost data, they have actual cost data, not conjectures, actual cost data, 81% of those buildings reported less than 1% construction cost premium. We know that. That's today. We don't need to hypothesize. They can build it today, building all-electric, net-zero housing, and that is ahead of what the specialized code is requiring us to do. Here's another interesting fact. Multifamily and affordable housing constitutes 11 million gross square feet. 11 million square feet of affordable housing and multifamily. Affordable housing makes up 44% of all of the residential net zero and net zero-ready square footage. Those houses are being heated, those multifamily houses are heated through air-source heat pumps, ground-source heat pumps. They're using electricity for domestic hot water. So, the argument that we can't do this because of costs is false. It is fear, uncertainty, and doubt. That is what that argument is. Actual data.
Thank you. Discussion under the main motion under Article fifteen.
Jean McKnight, Precinct F. I'm in favor of the adoption of the specialized stretch code, but I want to understand one aspect of it. On the explanation on page 18, in the third paragraph, it speaks of the new requirements under the Specialized Energy Code, which include new low-rise residential buildings up to three stories. And then it talks about houses that are below or above 4,000 square feet. It's not clear to me that that is describing the three-story multifamily buildings that are allowed in Needham under our Apartment A1 zoning, which is an important tool in our compliance with the MBTA Communities Law. And then it goes on to say, new multifamily buildings with four-plus stories have certain requirements. Can anybody explain what rules apply to three-story multifamily buildings, unless assumed they are greater than 12,000 square feet? And I serve as a member of the Planning Board, and we had a presentation by, I think it was Mr. Frail of the Climate Action Committee, and I should have asked this question and satisfied myself at that time, but this explanation confuses me on that score of the three-story multifamily buildings.
Very well, Ms. McKnight. Sounds like a question for the proponents regarding three-story multifamily buildings. Ms. Cooley, to respond to the member's question.
So, if you have a three-story multifamily, all right, that is considered, in fact, low-rise residential, they could have individual heating and cooling systems, and it would meet that first definition there, all right? I would presume, frankly, this is conjecture, right, that anybody who's building that right now may be considering passive house. That's certainly what we're hearing from people who are in the market.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley. Discussion under Article fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Dermody, Precinct J. I also have some concerns, as we see there are some questions here tonight. And my biggest concern is the last paragraph, which you mentioned actually in your remarks. This article must be adopted as-is without applying amendments or conditions. Passage of this article would approve all future additions and modifications of the Specialized Energy Code automatically, as updated by the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources. We don't know what those might be. Right now, we're saying this is only going to apply to new construction, but we don't know what those might be. I do feel that future study is needed, and maybe in time we will learn more and know more. So I would like to make a motion to refer this back to the Select Board for a further study with the report at a future town meeting.
Very well. Mr. Dermody makes a motion to refer the subject matter, the main motion under Article fifteen, to the Select Board for a report back to a future town meeting. The motion is proper, one that I'm sure is familiar to all of you. So, on the floor currently is the main motion under Article fifteen and a motion to refer the subject matter of Article fifteen back to the Select Board, and both are open for discussions. Discussion. It's in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Paulson, Precinct E. Couple of things I just want to say. I put heat pumps into our home in Maine about 18 months ago, and it's a little bit colder where we are in Maine than here in Needham, and we've had no problem having the heat pumps keep up with our heat needs over that time period. I think that the technology has advanced greatly in heat pumps, and anybody in this town should be able to put in heat pumps and be totally fine. In fact, anybody that has oil-forced hot air is a perfect candidate for switching to heat pumps because you can use your existing ductwork and switch off of oil and go to electric heat pumps. Save the environment, and it'll also save your costs. The most expensive cost is oil and propane, then electric, and then gas. A gas-heated house is still less expensive, but it's not to operate, but it's not very good for our environment, and as we've heard, there's a real issue here. In terms of the opt-in specialized code, as we know right now, it's dealing with new construction, which is, as we all know, not affordable. So, we're not worrying about affordable housing at this moment with this article and the opt-in specialized code. At some point in the future, if they switch the opt-in specialized code to deal with renovations and other things that we haven't contemplated, as Ms. Cooley pointed out, we can come back to town meeting and say, we're going to ditch the opt-in specialized code because it no longer is good for our community. As it is right now, it pushes the envelope, but it is what we need to meet the requirements, the objectives that we're trying to get to as a state and as a country. And I suggest we adopt this opt-in specialized code.
Thank you. Discussion under Article fifteen.
David Escolante, Precinct I. Is, are the mics all right? So, I am in favor of Mr. Dermody's motion to refer this. My bona fides, as it were, on this is my parents built both an active and passive solar home in the early 1980s, so I have some experience with 40 years of a house that does this type of thing. And I also buy solar credits from another place in Needham because my house doesn't have a good southern exposure, but I recognize that we're in a climate crisis. I recognize we need to do something. I just am not sure, because of various things I'm going to allude to here, that this is the exact time and place that has been suggested by others that we should be doing it. First off, I'm really confused by the wording of the article. I assume if we adopt this article, that it actually is going to be what we have to follow as opposed to what people are saying up here. So if you look at page 16 of your warrant, it says it's pursuant to the entirety of 225 CMR, which is Code of Mass Regulations 22 and 23, including appendices RC and CC, including, as someone noted, all future additions, amendments, and whatever. But, you know, that's a risk of any building code, so I'm not that worried about that. Then you look on page 17, and under Specialized Energy Code, it says the entirety of 225 CMR 22 and 23, including appendices RC and CC. Then we look at Stretch Energy Code, which has also been referred to here, and that says it's codified by the combination of 225 CMR 22 and 3, not including appendices RC and CC. So I have no idea, just on the basis of that, whether we're actually adopting appendices RC and CC or not, because those two seem to contradict them each other. The actual non-definition body underneath, 3.1, 3.1, 2, 3, 4, et cetera, et cetera, doesn't, I think, actually refer to the stretch definition at all. It only refers to the Specialized Energy Code. Maybe I'm missing something there? So, because I wondered what all this stuff was, I decided to go look up what 225 CMR 22 and 23 actually were. So, similar to the fact, I'm not sure how many of you have lived in a passive and active solar house for 40 years and know some of the issues with it, and there are some, which I may or may not get to. which I may or may not get to. I don't know how many of you have actually read this. I've tried to read it. I'm not good at that stuff. But there is a thing, Chapter 5, Reexisting Buildings, Section R502. This is in the 1/4 residential, which turns out to be CMR 22. And CMR 23 is commercial. Reexisting Building Sections, R502 Additions. An addition shall be deemed to comply with this code when the addition alone complies, which I assume means the addition has to be compliant, where the existing building and addition comply with this code as a single building, or where the building with the addition chooses a certified HERS rating in accordance with Table R406.5. Addition shall be in accordance with Sections R502.11, R502.2, or R502.3. Large additions. Additions to dwelling units exceeding 1,000 square feet shall require the dwelling unit to comply with a maximum HERS rating for alterations, additions, and changes. This gave me pause, just because I believe the proponents and people who've been speaking to this article have said it's only new construction. So I'm sort of confused why there's a section...
What's your point of order?
The comments are about the stretch code, not the specialized code.
Well, as I said...
Mr. Escalante, I'm sorry. That's not a violation of the rules. That's not... There's no point of order. Thank you. Continue, Mr. Escalante.
So there is stuff in the stretch code, which I believe, although I indicated that I'm confused what we're being asked to pass, because the first sentence of the article says, "Adopt the Municipal Opt-In Specialized Stretch Energy Code." So I'm confused about the wording of all this. And there's lots of other interesting stuff in CMR, 225 CMR, 22 and 3, which I would encourage people to read. And if we have... One of my sort of goals in life is never to model the Speaker of the House who said, "We have to pass a large, complicated bill to see what's in it." Some number of years ago, that just sort of offended my sensibilities.
Mr. Escalante, you just have one minute left. Thank you.
So there are things in there that I think somebody alluded to that this applies to appliances. So if you have a gas stove, that applies. If you have a gas dryer, or wish to have a gas dryer and things like that that might be minimally energy-using, all these things are relevant. There are numerous things in here stating that various types of inspections need to be made, and design certification letters from a certified passive house certifier need to be produced, and things like that. So I'm all in favor of doing things to make things better for the environment. It's not clear to me that 50 houses, while we wait a while and try to sort some of these things out and get a little more clarity, is going to improve things. We were all excited about plastics six months ago. The governor banned plastic water bottles at work recently. And there was an article on The Globe last week that said the effect of that was something like .0000, lots of zeros, and a 3 at the end, in terms of any real impact on the environment. So I would like to see the environment improve. I would like to see us deal with the energy crisis. And I agree with the previous people who wanted to refer this back to the Select Board to sort out all of the details.
Thank you, Mr. Escalante. Your time has expired. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Your time has expired. Discussion under Article 15. Yes, ma'am.
Holly Clark, Precinct D. My first concern, actually, is the tone that seems to have crept in if there's a disagreement about a substantive issue. I don't think it's good. I don't think ad hominem attacks help us. I heard two committees come in with different approaches. One is saying, "Let's do it now." Another is saying, "There are unintended consequences that should be considered." That's healthy. And if we're going to tell people, somehow, "You're out of order, and you're out of your lane," I just can't disagree more. I think we should appreciate the people that volunteer their time to give us help, just like all of us are here tonight, because we care about the town. I don't think there's anybody here that wants to do the wrong thing for the environment. I think there are people that also are saying, "This might have an unintended consequence." There is another town in Massachusetts last week that didn't adopt the stretch code, because they listened, and they considered the MIT study, and said, "This will make it more difficult to build the affordable housing." And that's their town priority at the moment. They want to work on both. That's a reasonable thing to do, for me. Maybe for somebody else, it isn't. But it is hard to get up and say, "I think something a little bit different." It's hard to do that. And it's worthy of respect. So I did hear the governor speak on Friday. It's Governor Healy. It's not the governor of West Virginia, okay? She's not in charge of a coal-mining company. And the state is studying right now how to get forward, how to move appropriately, I think most of us would think, and how to do it in a cost-effective manner, because we're going to have to pay for it. If we go all-electric, and there aren't enough electricians to get to the houses, we live in New England. It gets cold. You know, I have a... One of my kids had a hybrid car. Suddenly, the battery wasn't working. Well, guess what? She went to the dealership, and they said, "We have to get this technician, who will be here in seven weeks." Okay? I mean, we were doing the right thing. We got a hybrid car. We're trying to make it go. So I appreciate the motion to refer it back, because it's not saying, "We don't like this." It's not saying, "We don't want to do it." We're just saying, "Get some more information. Explain it more. Understand what's going forward." And the reason we haven't heard from other towns is, I believe, there's only three or four that adopted it, and it started in July. And then the others that have adopted it, it isn't in place till January. And I'm not saying, "Wait." I really wouldn't say, "We should be in the back of the pack." You know, we can't be forward-thinking. But forward-thinking should still be thoughtful. So I would support the motion to refer it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion under Article 15. Mr. Kremmings.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Kremmings, Precinct G. Personally, I would like to thank the Finance Committee for the work that you do. And I apologize for the comment comparing you to the tobacco companies. I thought that was rather uncalled for. And I do appreciate, as well, the motion to refer this article back. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion. Yes, sir. Mr. Crocker.
Artie Crocker, Precinct I. I think it was around 2012 when we first came, when the stretch code first came to Needham to try to pass it. And it didn't pass. And as a town meeting member, and someone who lives in Needham, I was embarrassed. I mean, it took till 2019 to get that to pass. I truly was embarrassed, for Needham being the whole, and almost a whole, state, as we waited. There's nothing magical about building a net-zero home. It's simply a choice. And we can choose to do it, or we can choose not to do it. The cost of heat and cool in a net-zero house is extremely small compared to a the same-old, same-old. You know, think about that. We can stick to the same-old, same-old, or we cannot. The choice is ours. Any building put up today will be on the earth for generations to come, 100 years. What we put up today could easily be 100 years down the road with no changes to its efficiency. Let's not fall... Let's not, you know, don't fall into the wait-and-see. I mean, I can appreciate, I respect what people have to say as far as wanting to know more. I can't. But let's also not be confused by comments on the existing stretch code, which Needham adopted, which Needham already adopted, because there were some comments made in there. Then all of a sudden, people's heads start swirling. Don't know what the heck is going on. These comments are made about something which we aren't talking about tonight. Needham is an educated, intelligent community. The time to act for climate change was yesterday. I support Article 16, because we have to do it. I do it for my grandkids. I do it for all of yours. We have to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion under Article 15. Yes, in the back.
You can't just stand up and say that. You have to go to the microphone. You have to identify yourself. You have to say your precinct in accordance with our rules.
Andrea Danenberg, Precinct C. I'd like to call the question.
Okay. Ms. Danenberg moves the question, which is not debatable and requires a 2/3 vote for passage. Favorable action on the motion will bring the two motions to an immediate vote, the main motion under Article 15 and the motion to refer. On the motion, the previous question, 2/3 required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay. The ayes have it. 2/3 declared on a voice vote. The motion carries. This brings us to an immediate vote. Under our rules, a motion to refer has a higher order of precedence, because favorable action on the motion to refer disposes of the main motion under Article 15. In this case, the subject matter of the main motion under Article 15 would be referred back to the Board of Selectmen for further study and a report at a future town meeting. The motion to refer requires a majority for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay. The motion fails on a voice vote. This brings us to the main motion under Article 15. Ms. Cooley moves to amend the general bylaw, Specialized Energy Code. The text of the main motion is identical to Article 15 in your warrant. On the main motion, a bylaw, thus a majority required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and I declare Article 15 disposed of. This brings us to Article 16. Under Article 16, Ms. Mary Ann Cooley moves for a non-binding resolution of town meeting. The text of the main motion... The text of the main motion is identical to Article 16 in your warrant. On the main motion, speaking on behalf of the proponents, the Select Board, Ms. Mary Ann Cooley, the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members. A year ago, I was before you, asking for your support for the town to expend $2.5 million to acquire 34 acres of open space at Castle Farm, the Fosker property. Thank you for your support then. That came at the year of... End of a year of negotiation. That concept of 70-town house homes clustered on 14 acres, surrounded by an additional 14 acres with 5% affordable housing, may not be built, because the state has decommitted their previously provided support for the 5% affordable housing. After another four months over the summer of exploration with the state, the town and the developer have reached a dead end on that approach. The seller's trustee, however, has told the town that the sellers, after their initial shock with our proposal, have come to prefer this land-use approach. They think it presents the best opportunity to meet their goals and provide a legacy that their parents, particularly their father, Hank Foster, Massachusetts' first cabinet-level Secretary of Environmental Affairs, would appreciate. Because we are able to move forward with the development of a local initiative program, although there is no prohibition in state law for what we proposed, the Select Board is bringing you a question about priorities. I understand that you have received letters telling you that you are here to be approving zoning, or that you're preapproving zoning, or that zoning should go through the regular process. As town meeting members, I'm sure you understand this question is not about zoning. We make choices about our resources. Zoning is one of the more time-consuming things that we do. Therefore, the Select Board is asking a question. Do you want us to prioritize a zoning effort that we had not planned for this year? Zoning is the other possible route that the town has some control over to accomplish the acquisition of this open space. If obtaining 34 acres of open space for $2.5 million is still something that you see as beneficial for the town, please vote yes on this question. If you think the town should not pursue this acquisition through zoning, then vote no. The underlying, single-family zoning would continue to govern the parcel, the sale of the parcel. I understand that some people see this as complicated. In order to create the opportunity for 34 acres of open space accessible to the town, the town is asked to accept the density of the development project. Is there a trade-off? Yes. But it goes through a public process where input is received and considered. In return, there is a public benefit of 34 acres of open space, and in this case, some amount of affordable housing in a section of town that otherwise has zero affordable housing. It would be a lovely opportunity for some families. Several people have asked if a question like this is unprecedented. It is not. Town meeting has asked questions regularly. The Select Board asked in 2008 if town meeting members would possibly support the proposal to restore Powers Hall at additional cost. They said yes, and this beautiful hall is the result. In recent years, you've been asked about nuclear weapons, racial equity, and yes, about climate emergencies. In case you have forgotten, the town is neither the buyer nor the seller in this transaction. We are the tip of the tail wagging the dog. We are not taking the financial risk of the transaction, and the outcome of any sale will be subject to a public process at the Planning Board. If you vote yes this evening, then the Select Board will ask the Planning Board to take up zoning specific to this parcel with the municipal benefit of open space, and that zoning will go through a full process. I don't think I've ever seen zoning come out the end of the process in the same way it went into the public process. And I expect that will be true for this zoning as well. If the end zoning results in the possibility of an economically viable project, then it is likely a project will occur. If it does not, then the zoning will not produce a change. That is also true of all our zoning efforts. We get the opportunity to see if the zoning works as planned. There's always a reality check. The Select Board's goal, last year and this, is the acquisition of 34 acres of stunning open space to support access to that beautiful meadow in the Charles. And the scenic road will be preserved. We ask for your support on Article 16. Oh, one more thing. If town meeting votes yes, you will see me one more time on this. The resulting zoning will need to come to town meeting for your approval. And I am certain that if you are not satisfied with it, you will let the Select Board know. We listen to you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley. Delivering the recommendation of the Finance Committee, Mr. John Connolly.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, fellow town meeting members. It's great to see you all. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend that Article 16 not be adopted by this special town meeting. Let me pause before I explain why the Finance Committee does not recommend adoption of Article 16. It is not because we disagree that the property is beautiful. We agree that this is beautiful property. It is not because the acquisition of open space lacks value. We agree that the acquisition of open space is a valid goal for the town to pursue. But Article 16 is not about open space. Article 16 is about zoning. And for the reasons I will set forth in this presentation, the Finance Committee recommends that Article 16 not be adopted, because in our view, it is a zoning article that is inappropriate, unnecessary, and unprecedented. Why is Article 16 inappropriate? Why is Article 16 inappropriate? It is inappropriate because, at this point in time, at the end of October 2023, almost two years after the Foster property was first put up for sale, and one year after Town Meeting appropriated funding for purchase, there are no binding agreements in place between any of the parties. The property owners and the developer, Northland, fell out of agreement at the end of March earlier this year, and there was no signed development agreement in place between the developer and the town. Yet, without these critical agreements in place, we are being asked to engage in this prejudgment process with Article 16 before the Planning Board has begun its due diligence and without fully and fairly considering the views of all potential stakeholders. The only way we can have such full and fair consideration is if all the details are shared with everyone, and yet that has not happened here because the town's due diligence process has not yet begun. Town Meeting approved funding of $2.5 million to purchase open space a year ago based upon a proposed development plan. The plan was based on a development that did not comply with the town's existing zoning bylaws and had less affordable housing than either state or town guidelines. State law allows developers and towns to agree to developments that do not meet zoning bylaws if the development will further affordable housing. Massachusetts requires that 10% of the housing units in each community be affordable. A total of community has reached at least 10% affordable units. Developers willing to include a minimum of 25% of the proposed new housing units as affordable per the state guidelines can come into the town and develop as a right a housing development that does not comply with zoning bylaws. Even after a municipality reaches a 10% minimum, which Needham has now done, then the Select Board can enter into development agreements with developers, which allow the developer to build a housing project that does not comply with existing zoning bylaws because the project meets the municipal goal of increasing affordable housing. This was the path that was outlined to Town Meeting last year. Here, the developer's plan included a 5% affordability component. That is less than the state's 10% minimum for each town. It is less than the town's guidelines of 12.5%, and it is less than the state's 25% minimum for particular developments like this one originally seeking state approval outside of local zoning. The Select Board has stated that the town and the developer had received assurances that the 5% would be acceptable to the state and allow the developer to proceed with a denser development than allowed by our zoning bylaws. The Finance Committee was not able to confirm these assurances, and the developer's plan failed to receive state approval. Since then, the developer and the property owners have not been able to agree on anything. It is up to them to get the matter moving, not Town Meeting. The Town Finance Committee was told that the property owners are looking for an indication from Town Meeting that Town Meeting would approve a zoning change to allow for development plan yet to be finalized. The Finance Committee finds this process to be backwards. We all know that when it comes to zoning, the details are crucial. Tonight, Town Meeting is being asked to vote support for a zoning plan that is vague, that's conclusory, and is unspecific, and that's why it's inappropriate at this time. When one looks at the articles that Town Meeting is asked to take action on, for example, the operating budget, which we do each year in May, the amendments to the Town General Bylaws for Non-Criminal Dispositions, which we did earlier tonight, the information presented, you saw through the charts, it's clear and it's specific. Town Meeting is being told exactly what it is voting on. Compare that to this Article 16, which is not only vague but also raises more questions than it answers. Article 16 is framed in the term of a concept. Article 16 does not state what section or sections of the current zoning bylaws are to be amended. Article 16 does not define what a clustered development is. Is it for housing and therefore would require at least 10% in affordable housing to be considered inclusionary zoning? Or is it for the preservation of open space? Article 16 mentions a bylaw allowing, quote, "approximately 70 townhome housing units." What does approximately mean? Is it 70 units, or 60 units, or maybe even 80 units? And what is a townhouse housing unit? How many bedrooms? How many baths do they have? What is the square footage of the units? What are the required setbacks? How many stories will these townhouse units have? With respect to units being at least 5% affordable, again, what does that mean? If our town's aspiration is to have more affordable housing built, why the floor 5% when the state and our town require greater percentages on projects such as this where the developer is seeking such substantial change from the existing zoning bylaws? In addition, what are the financial implications? How will the cluster development affect the town's resources, its roads, its schools, its public safety? What precedent will the implementation of this cluster development have on other areas throughout the town? Will it be restricted to just these parcels on Charles River Street? Or will it be available in other parts of the town as well? These are all critical questions in considering any zoning bylaw amendment, and yet none of these questions can be addressed in Article 16. The issue of what this proposed zoning bylaw change might mean for the rest of the town is also concerning. If the zoning bylaws for the Foster property can be so pre-arranged, why not elsewhere? And what will the conditions upon which such decisions will be sought and approved? It is not clear to us why the proponents have chosen to initiate a zoning change without the involvement of the Planning Board and before crucial details are known. The purpose of Article 16 seems to be focused on the acquisition of open space without much focus on the details of the requested zoning. Why is Article 16 unnecessary? Article 16 is unnecessary because our town has a well-established and long-followed process for considering and proposing amendments to our zoning bylaws. The Finance Committee is concerned about how the process will be affected by this Article 16, which is essentially a straw poll. The proponents argue that they would like to get a sense of Town Meeting prior to embarking on a lengthy process to change the zoning bylaws, does have some surface appeal, but that requirement or argument does not withstand analysis. The process for changing our zoning bylaws begins with the Planning Board, not with Town Meeting. The Planning Board is comprised of elected town officials who consider, study, deliberate on, and then propose, or not propose, to Town Meeting any amendments to our zoning bylaws. If a party, such as the developer, Northland, or the property owners here, would like any of the zoning bylaws to be amended, they would typically bring their proposal to the Planning Board. Of course, they could also bring their proposal to the Select Board, who may choose to work with the developer and the owners of the property. Either way, the process begins with a Planning Board, an independent elected board. The Planning Board then considers the proposal, holds public hearings where neighborhood groups can learn about and ask questions on the proposal, undertakes any necessary studies such as traffic, environmental, economic, and infrastructure that the proposal requires, drafts the specific language to amend the zoning bylaws, and then only after having done all of that, votes to bring a specific zoning bylaw amendment back to you, Town Meeting. That process that I just described has stood our town well for many years. I won't belabor it, but we put together a slide of recent zoning bylaw amendments that this Town Meeting has done, starting with the current proposal right now and then going back to proposal in the fall of 2020 with the Avery Square Overlay District. Again, the purpose here is not to go through all of them, but to show you that with respect to each of them, these are ones that went to the Planning Board, and then the Planning Board, after doing the deliberation I just spoke to you about, came back with a specific proposal. In none of these instances was there any prejudging occurring where Town Meeting was asked before any of this occurred to give a straw poll or propose that this zoning should go forward. In each of these instances, the Planning Board was allowed to do its work, and then the Town Meeting has to do its own work when a specific zoning bylaw is brought before it. In each instance of what I just described here, Town Meeting was asked to vote on a very specific and a detailed zoning bylaw amendment. There is no need to upend that process by asking Town Meeting to take action on a vague, non-binding resolution. Town Meeting took its action when it voted to appropriate the funds to purchase the open space last October. No other action from Town Meeting is required at this time. It is now up to the developer, Northland, and the property owners to do their part to actually bind themselves to written agreements and to take their proposals for zoning changes to the Planning Board, just like every other developer and land property owner has been required to do in the past. We have a process that works. There is no reason not to follow it here and to involve Town Meeting with a non-binding resolution that is unprecedented. In conclusion, it is the Finance Committee's recommendation that with so much missing information from Article 16, and with the overall need for Article 16 so lacking, Article 16 should not be adopted by this special town meeting. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Discussion under Article 16. Mr. Handel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mo Handel, Precinct I. I look at this as a very simple question before us. It is not a question of zoning. It is a question of what method we use to implement the decision that this Town Meeting made with respect to this general area and the ultimate use of it, including the ability of this town to purchase 34 acres for $2.5 million. This is a non-binding resolution that indicates to the seller and the buyer that there is still interest in that concept. It does no harm to any process with a non-binding resolution. I was a member of the Select Board when we put a bid on a piece of property where we were the highest bidder, and we didn't get the bid because the seller knew that that could get bound up in process in an uncertain Town Meeting vote. All this resolution does is indicate to the seller and the buyer that there is still interest, and the Planning Board would have the obligation to make or not make decisions with respect to what they would propose to Town Meeting by way of zoning. We are not being asked tonight to zone. We are being asked tonight what our interest is in this area, and the Select Board's resolution before us does that. So I strongly recommend that we support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Handel. Discussion.
Aaron Pressman, Precinct D. I rise tonight in favor of the non-binding resolution. I think it's important to come to the defense of the Select Board in this case, which is being told that it somehow did something inappropriate. That is not the case. None of our zoning rules, none of the procedures of Town Meeting or the Planning Board are being short-circuited whatsoever. All we're being asked to do here is to try and encourage a really great deal for the town to get 34 acres of land next to the Charles River for $2.5 million to give it a little push to try and keep it going. The last thing I just wanted to make the point of is, we saw a list of some other zoning moves that Town Meeting has made that apparently were done in an appropriate, detailed fashion, such as Avery, Muzzy. We also did the Central Business District. If you think about it, we don't have any development at Muzzy. The Avery project fell apart. The Central Business District didn't get the mixed use we wanted. Detailed zoning doesn't guarantee us anything, and we're not short-circuiting any process. We're trying to give a little nudge, a little push, to help this deal along, to get a great deal for the town for some open space. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Pressman. Discussion.
Sorry. Had to pull it down. Sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah. Okay. I rise in opposition to this article, and I'll explain why. First of all, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the vote we took last year for that land holds, no matter what we do here, on this article. So we are not putting that in jeopardy that was done. Second of all, I think it's an error for the town to disregard one of its major committees. I think Planning Board should have a place in giving us the information we need for us to make our decision, and I think it's a really short-sighted era, unless you want to get rid of the Planning Board or the Select Board or whatever board. We're a town run by volunteers who put in their effort to try to do the best for Needham, and to disregard that board, to not let it take part in this decision, I think is an error, and I think it's something we're going to grow to regret. So I'm asking you not to pass this. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Sockel. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Alpert.
Lois, excuse me.
What's that? Oh, it's too low? Mr. Jakes, do you want to help him with that?
No. It's fine, Mr. Moderator.
You sure?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
All right.
Paul Alpert, Precinct C. I am also a member of the Planning Board, but I don't rise to speak for the Planning Board. I rise to speak totally for myself. The Planning Board voted prior to this Town Meeting to not take a position on this article. So that's the official Planning Board position. We are absolutely neutral. And I am neutral on this also. I appreciate the Finance Committee and the work that they do. The state law and our bylaws provide that the purpose of the Finance Committee is to analyze every warrant article and to report to Town Meeting their recommendations for every warrant article. So I appreciate what they've done. But I personally feel that they have misread this article. My father was a lawyer before me, and he taught me, read between the lines. And I'm reading between the lines. It's been two years. The Foster family and the developer have spent a lot of time on this. If they're going to go forward, they're going to spend a lot more time on it, and they're asking Town Meeting to tell them, are we wasting our time? You vote no, that's fine. Vote no. I've heard a lot of opposition to this 72 or 70-unit development, and that's fine. On the other hand, I've heard a lot of talk about it's a very worthwhile project for this town. We need more housing. We need affordable housing, and we're getting, for $2.5 million, 34 acres of pristine land. So vote yes, vote no. Let the developer and the Foster family know whether they're wasting their time to go forward, or else the Foster family can say, fine, we're just going to put the property back on the market, and they have the right to do that. This will come back to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board will follow, if you vote yes, this will come back to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board will follow all the procedures that the Finance Committee wants the Planning Board to do. And we will come back to you, possibly, if it works out, with a zoning article. There'll be a lot of give and take with the proponents, with the Select Board, as to what we get. The Finance Committee raised the question, what does approximately 70 townhouse units mean? Does it mean 60? Does it mean 80? My answer is yes. Yes. That's for discussion with the Planning Board. We will have a zoning article that will state something about the number of units. Affordable housing. It says at least 5%. Now, 5% of 70 units is four units. You always have to round up. The state says, if you want our approval, you got to have 25%. That's 18 units. There's a number between 4 and 18 that's going to be discussed at the Planning Board. Will it be 10%? Will it be 12.5%, which is what the Planning Board usually likes to see in this town? Will it be some number other than that? This is all what the process will develop. This is all what the process will develop if you vote yes. And if you vote no, which is fine also, then the Foster family moves on, the developer moves on, and the town moves on. I'm not advocating yes or no, but I want you to understand this is not a zoning article. This is just letting the developer and the Foster family know whether or not they're wasting their time, and if they're not wasting their time, the Planning Board will do its job. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Alpert, discussion? Yeah, in the back? Yes.
Henry Reagan, Precinct J. Want to make a couple of points, and I understand that we're not voting on a zoning article. I think that's very clear. It came up, there was a joint meeting between the Planning Board and the Select Board, which was on local TV, and a member of the Planning Board asked the question whether the land that was being sold to the town, the 34 acres, was in fact developable, ooh, I knew that was going to be a problem, developable land, or whether it was a case of the builder offloading unbuildable land, thus reducing his tax burden. The response came back that it was developable land, and when asked who said, the answer was some developers. I would like clarification, after I finish my presentation, of who says that it is developable, in fact, and that it's not just land that the builder has no use for. I do feel that by putting the 5% number in here, I have respect for what the prior speaker said about, it does say at least 5%, and it'll be up to the Planning Board to decide. But by putting 5% in here, we're sort of bending the curve a little bit off the beginning. And I think that that's a mistake. I have a question which hasn't come up, and it may be that I am too ignorant of the zoning process, or the town, land management process, but will the land that the town buys be able to be sold to a private developer at some point in the future? If in fact it is developable? The difference between 5% and the 12.5% that we use as a standard is five units. A member of the Select Board, when being interviewed on local TV, said that an extra unit, excuse me, pardon me, an affordable unit costs an extra between $250,000 and $300,000. So five units using the higher number would be $1.5 million. Amortizing that against the existing units would be $20,000 to $25,000. In the debate on the prior article, someone said something about the extra energy cost would only be about 1%. Well, so would the $20,000 to $25,000 that would have to come into this. So let's be consistent about that. I do feel that one factor that runs as a thread throughout this is that the Foster family totally understandably, as well as the developer totally understandably, as well as the rest of the town, and the neighbors certainly, want this thing resolved. I understand that, and that's certainly legitimate. But does the seller know that it's possible by the time this comes up for a vote on the actual zoning at Town Meeting, that 1/3 of us may not be here? That 40% of the Select Board may not be here? That 20% of the Planning Board, and I would say regrettably because the member is resigning, 20% of the Planning Board won't be here? Now, I know that we usually all get re-elected, but let's face the reality. If I was a seller, I would be concerned that the people who tonight authorized and said, we want to go forward, may not be here when the time comes to actually go forward. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Reagan. You had two questions, I think you wanted me to put to the proponents. Is that right, sir?
Yes, please.
Yes. So let me just make sure I have them correct. You had said you wanted to know who specifically has stated that the 34 acres is developable land, and the second was if the town acquires that land, whether or not the town could sell it for development. Is that right?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Those two questions to the proponents. Ms. Cooley to respond to the members' two questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Miles, can you put up the land plan slide again, please? I just think it would be helpful here. The first question was this question of who says it is developable. All right, I understand that there's a lot of space down on the meadow that is, you know, wetlands, but we have had town staff look at it, in addition to plenty of developers who have said, if somebody wanted to build a house there, you could find a spot to build a house. All right? And the, just to orient again, the road is at the top of the picture, all right? The river's at the bottom of the picture, so I'm being asked if the space that's down at the bottom in the meadow, okay, is actually developable. People keep saying it's not developable. He's just throwing away land that wouldn't be used. The answer is, we have had people, there was originally, as you can see in the land use plan, there was an idea that there would be some homes down there. Town staff has agreed, somebody could build there if they wanted to build there. Now, the next question was, if the town acquired the land, would the land be able to be sold to a developer later? Now, all of this is talking about things that haven't really happened, but we did have a draft development agreement, all right, that never ended up getting signed and executed because that happened around the time that the state came in and said, oh, by the way, all those times we told you that you could do 5%, you can't do 5%, okay? So it didn't actually get signed. But in that development agreement, it did call for us to immediately put a conservation restriction on the two, three-acre lots that are along the road, all right? Once we've done that, the land becomes landlocked, there's no access, and it would not be able to be sold to a developer to be built on later. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley. Discussion? Yes, sir. No, I'm sorry, behind. I'm just, I'll get to you next, sir, but...
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gary Jamian from Precinct F. So it's interesting. I wanted to learn more about the Foster property legacy, so I did some research on Charles Henry Hank Foster. 2012 Harvard Gazette is my reference. And I was surprised by what I learned. What a remarkable man. Turns out, he was a Harvard graduate. He held degrees in forestry, wildlife management, and he had a PhD in environmental engineering. He became one of our country's leading experts in environmental policy. He served our nation in the Army just after World War II. He was the dean of the Yale School of Forestry and Environmental Studies, and he devoted more than 15 years of his life to serve seven Massachusetts governors from both parties to promote effective use of our state's natural resources. In 1971, while I was attending Needham High, Hank Foster became our state's first cabinet-level Secretary of Environmental Affairs. He was a forward-thinking man, and he left us and the town of Needham the legacy of this beautiful property, this beautiful land. So I wondered, what would he want done with this land? If he was here now and speaking to us today, I believe he would have said, there's a process in place, one that he helped to shape, and that process must be followed. He would want us to follow the established process rather than what currently feels like a very rushed decision with limited data. He might say yes to the project, or he might say no to the project, but that would only be after deliberate study with input from experts in environmental policy, real estate development, finance, and governmental policy studies. Hank might say, you don't need to go to Harvard to use this common sense in this situation, which includes, number one, let's follow the process; number two, let's put this in the hands of the experts; number three, let the experts be our guide; number four, and then, after the experts have weighed in, the town can make an informed decision. Dr. Foster would want the best outcome possible for the town he loved. But today, tomorrow, and a century from now, that's what I believe Dr. Charles H.W. Foster would have wanted. I compel you to vote no on Article 16, and let us follow the process. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Jamian. Discussion? Yes, in the back? Ma'am?
Andrea Danenberg, Precinct C. I'd like to offer an amendment to the motion, to the article, I'm sorry.
To the motion, you're right.
Okay. I'd like to strike from the first line, amending the zoning bylaws to, to change allow to allowing, to strike for...
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Is this very lengthy, Ms. Danenberg?
No.
Because we have a rule about lengthy motions, right? They have to be cleared in advance with town council and the moderator?
No.
Okay. So then, just, please just slow down and start from the beginning. You have a motion to amend the language, the main motion under Article 16, and you would like to strike what?
Amending the zoning bylaw to... Change the word allow to allowing, to strike the words for clustered, and then to skip down to the third line and strike as approximately 70 townhome housing units, and change 5% to 12...
Sorry, sorry. I really want to get it right, and it is kind of long. So delete for clustered?
Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh. And then what's your next?
And then delete as approximately 70 townhome housing units.
Okay, now what?
And to change 5% to 12.5%.
Anything else?
Now I will explain why.
Well, you want to read your motion as...
Sure. To see if the town will vote to support the concept of allowing development of a portion of the parcel located at 484 Charles River Street, containing 58.28 acres, as shown on Assessor's Map 304, Block 0002, of which at least 12.5% would be affordable. And it continues as written.
Okay. That motion to amend is tendered and is on the floor, and you may speak to it now.
As others have mentioned, we have a clear zoning process in this town. I suggest that we follow it. We do not need to give a concept and support a concept for a zoning amendment. That is something that can happen without town meeting action, first of all. Second of all, we have been given no justification, no explanation as to why current zoning is not appropriate, why current zoning is not adequate, and why 70 units must be built there. By all accounts, approximately 20 units would be allowable on this location by right. This would be making it approximately 3.5 times more housing in this location that's located in an economically sensitive part of town. This area was zoned rural reservation conservation for a reason, to protect the environment, and we have been given no explanation for why 20 units, or 70 units, or 700 units are appropriate in this location. So why would we be passing an amendment that specifies a set number without any justification and without any explanation? And as to the affordable housing component, I believe earlier this year, our town passed a resolution to support 12.5% affordable housing in all multifamily units, and I don't see why this should be a different case. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Danenberg. The discussion will continue with two motions, the main motion and Ms. Danenberg's motion to amend, which you heard, the effect of which she read aloud to Town Meeting, and I think is clear enough. Discussion on the two motions pending. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eric Bailey, Precinct A. I strongly supported the motion when it came to us a year ago. I strongly support this now. It's really no different. This is a consistent, straight line from what we voted on last year. Let's vote yes. The town needs higher-density housing. I'm sure we'll be voting in a year or two on the MBTA. This is a small bit of that. I would rather have a little bit of higher density and a lot of open space than the other image up there by right of taking away the entire thing forever. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Discussion? Yes, sir, here?
Michael Niden, Precinct E. I've been working on this myself over the past year. I had an opportunity to meet with the neighbors, the Kettles, and they were very clear about Mr. Foster's wishes. They were very good friends. As a matter of fact, Mr. Foster gave Mr. Kettle the tractor that cuts the lawn currently. Key point. If we don't vote yes, this will go, approval not required, to a developer. There will be 25 homes. We will lose three or four, or I guess at least four, affordable housing. Do we want to do away with that completely? So if you don't vote for this tonight, this crowning jewel in our open space, and I don't know how many people have been out there and actually visited it, it's gone. A no vote tonight, it's over.
Thank you, Mr. Niden. Discussion? Yes, in the back row over here? Or, I hope it's not the back row. I hope it's in Town Meeting. Are you a resident or a Town Meeting member?
Town Meeting member.
Okay, great.
Irene Berlinsky, Precinct C. I completely support what Mr. Niden mentioned just now, and I'll make my comments very brief. I'm not sure any community anywhere, certainly not Needham, has ever regretted preserving open space. Our family pictures were just at the Charles River Reservation, the trustees' property. I toured the Foster property a week ago. It is similar level of spectacular. We just don't know about it because we haven't been. We go, we walk around the town forest, which I'm sure many people here enjoy as well. We enjoy the town reservoir. We enjoy the Cutler Reservoir. These are all the heart of the community that make it livable and wonderful. And I truly hope that we can preserve that for our kids and grandkids, to have one more beautiful, accessible space like this. Yes, it sounds like if we don't at least try, there's still no guarantee that everything will work out, but at least we're trying. If we vote no today, it's going to be 20 big houses, and that's it. So thank you for all the work all the committees have done to give us the information to the extent it's available.
Thank you. Discussion? Yes, sir, in the middle row? Right there? Yeah. Yeah, you, sorry. Mr. Mulno, right?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry about that. Couldn't see you. They've got a spotlight here in my eyes. It's a little hard.
Threw me off with the middle row. I'm like, oh, is this a...
Yeah, well, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Glenn Mulno, Precinct I. First, I just want to say, there's nothing rushed about this process. A year ago, I think we, to put it mildly, gave a lot of feedback to the Select Board that we did not like the way they handled this process. Even after that, this body voted to spend the money to acquire the property with the understanding that it would be clustered building, not clustered zoning, but clustered building with 5% affordable, and all of the concerns that would exist today. Fast forward to today, there's nothing rushed about coming here and asking for this article to pass. It's not bypassing any process. So if we say no to this... So, if we say no to this, it kills the whole thing. Maybe the town will get some open space, maybe they won't, but there won't be any affordable housing. I would also advocate we do not vote to support the amendment, because that effectively kills it as well. So, just in defense of the Select Board, this is not being rushed, this is just asking if we would support the process. The state rejected what, basically what we voted for last year because it didn't meet the zoning, so they wanted to force the 25% affordable. So, anyway, that's what we're being asked for.
Thank you. Discussion under Article 16. Yes, in the back?
I live on Central Avenue. The corner of Charles River and Central Avenue will have major impact if something is built here. A couple of town meetings ago, I talked about how that neighborhood had asked for a crosswalk because their kids couldn't cross Central Avenue to get to school. Nothing, I suppose this is a question, has anybody looked at the traffic? Is the plan to have a traffic study done before we change this zoning? We were told back then it would be a quarter of a million dollars to put in a crosswalk. This is a scenic road. It's two lanes with no sidewalks, and it's beautiful. I mean, and I concede, I conceded last year, it is a beautiful meadow, and if, and we, I will give you every dollar well spent, I really will. But it is different to come to town meeting and ask us to pre-approve or give a nod to a particular developer about this particular project. It is different than when we said, yes, we would like to keep Town Hall. We own Town Hall. It is different than when we're giving an opinion on a general concept. What we are doing here is proposing a change in zoning, which impacts the neighbors. And I appreciate, I heard today for the first time, this was a request to kind of direct the Select Board, I guess, efforts over the next year. What would normally happen in a development, I have been told by developers, is they would meet with the neighbors. They would find out, what are your concerns? And they would try to work those concerns into the project and maybe head off difficulty. That did not happen here. Last year, the neighbors learned about this, as many of us did, a month before it came to town, here to town meeting. And we voted. We voted for the, for the Select Board to pursue the property, and actually, we voted basically by any means necessary. Take it, if you need to take it, figure out how to get it. And that's fine. But after that meeting, we asked about, what would the process be to now to hear from the neighbors? And there has not been one Select Board meeting with the neighbors at a Select Board open meeting to say, what are your concerns? Let's hear from you. And the reason I know that is because we all got an email last year in November when there was going to be a meeting, it got postponed because the seller and the Northland didn't go forward. And I emailed the Select Board and said, why don't you meet with the neighbors? You don't actually need the developer, because you are the Select Board. The neighbors should be able to speak with all of the town. Their concerns should get built into the project, and then the project can go forward. Because neighbors actually understand where they're living. It may get messy, they may not get everything they want, but they'll feel heard, and they do know. They know that their kids take the school bus through Wellesley because the traffic on Charles River and Central is so heavy, they can't get to school on time. They know that. They know that the drop-off bus, when they're bringing kids back, those kids get dropped off on the other side of Central Avenue, when, for the late afternoon drop bus. Those are things that the infrastructure should, should account for if we're now going to put in 70 more townhomes, which maybe we want to do. Maybe at the end of the day, we'll want to do that. But we should know what the cost is of actually doing it. How is it going to be safe? Those are the questions that need to be answered. So my concern here, and the reason I can't support this, is because that process just didn't happen. And this has, in fact, turned it on its head, because they, because we did. That, that's just, in fact, what we did. So my, my other question might be, are there members of the boards that know about other offers to purchase the property and still preserve, potentially preserve, the open space, and even get it to the town through another buyer? Because if we do this, we are incentivizing for this developer.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Clark. I have two questions. Did I get this correct? You, you wanted to know, will the traffic study be done before town meeting is asked to vote on any zoning change? Is that right?
Correct.
And then you wanted to know, from the sponsors, whether there are other offers from other buyers that would preserve the open space?
I wanted to know from any board, if any board has been-
Well, I have to direct it to someone, and I'm going to say the proponents, because I think the proponents are the appropriate source for-
I certainly leave that to your-
Thanks.
To you. You're welcome.
Thanks. I appreciate that. I appreciate that vote of confidence. Thank you.
Anytime.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Ms. Cooley, did you hear the two?
The traffic question.
Traffic question, and then a question about, are there offers from other developers that would similarly preserve the open space for the town?
All right. Am I allowed to make a comment about something too, Mr.?
I'm, I can't hear you.
May I make a comment about another point as well, Mr. Moderator? I'll be careful.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, when I recognize, I recognize for purposes of the question, but I don't want to reopen debate, but sure, Ms. Cooley, I'll, I'll let you do that, but I'd ask you to please use your discretion, and let's just try to keep going forward, not backwards.
So, so, Ms. Clark's questions, there were a number of questions in there that started with the traffic question, but those are all very relevant questions for a zoning process, and I expect that they will be fully explored in the zoning question, process. So, great questions. The question specifically about traffic, right, is I expect that the planning board will ask for a traffic study. I happen to know, those of you who have participated in this process, the current developer who we're working with has, in fact, already committed to a traffic study. You know, why has one not happened? It hasn't happened because there actually is no there there yet, right? So if there were a there there, and it were at the planning board, then there would be a traffic study. This question about, are there other offers that the town is aware of where open space has been offered to the town as, potentially as part of an offer that may have been given to the sellers? I am not aware of any other offer that fits that category, all right? I am aware of other offers that have occurred over a variety of times. I have heard that there are still offers that are being made to the seller. What I told you was that the seller has told us that they happen to be partial to the concept that is in front of them right now from this one developer, and they have not seen that from somebody else. There was a question that was asked about listening to the neighbors. So I do want, I didn't talk about that here, but I do maybe want to remind people, all right? I personally had a meeting with the neighbors before town meeting last year, a Zoom meeting, meeting with the neighbors. The developer met with the neighbors. We had a meeting in January with the developer and the Select Board and the neighbors. So there had been multiple meetings, in fact, with the neighbors, and one of the very obvious things that I can tell you that arose from listening to the neighbors, the most critical thing to them was buffer, and the commitment to 100-foot buffer around this property and 200 feet set back from the street was something that the developer committed to because of the input from the neighbors. So I do want to assure you that we are all listening to the neighbors, and I anticipate that the planning board, as a part of their process, will continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley. Discussion? Yes, in the back?
Fred Ferkettic, Precinct C. I was in on that telephone, or that Zoom call. Ms. Cooley told us, one, the traffic study had already been done, and, two, the results of that study were 10 cars per minute. Right now, I feel like the Wizard of Oz, looking at the man behind the curtain. A thing cannot be and be at the same time. A lot of what's been said has been exaggerated to make it look like, ho-hum, we'll just get on with it. You better be very careful what you vote for, because at some point, it may be too late. Thank you.
Okay, sir, I'm sorry, could you state your name again, and, are you-
Sure. The first name is-
Sorry, sorry, are you a town meeting member?
No, I am not.
Oh, okay, great, all right. That's, we just need to, for the record, we want to make sure we have it right.
Anything else?
Yeah, we just need your name.
Fred Ferkettic. It's like frenetic, but with a K.
That's excellent. Thank you very much, sir. Yes, in the, right here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Maggie Abruzzi, Precinct D. I have a lot of different things that I would like to say. The first being that this vote here tonight is not about preserving the land. We've already told the town and the Select Board that we would like to preserve this land. This particular article is named Open Space Zoning, but that's not what it's about. It's about what's going to happen on those 28 acres that is buildable by all accounts. You saw a map up there of what someone suggested was by right zoning. And I suggest to you that that map may have been created before actual investigation into the property and the limitations of the property took place, because the two A&R lots were shown to be six buildable lots. And we know now that, in fact, they are only four buildable lots. That's part of why the Northland deal fell apart. The 28 acres where this 70-unit townhouse is proposed and-
Excuse me, Ms. Abruzzi, I'm going to ask Mr. Tucker, could you just, she's referring to the visual that was up there earlier, and if it's okay, there we go. Thank you, Ms. Abruzzi.
Yeah, you can see the, the two teeth as they're referred to. They show six lots, when in fact, we know now, because Northland came to the planning board to seek A&R for those lots, that you actually can only get four buildable lots out of those because of the presence of wetlands and because of the need to have a certain The Select Board has stated that the seller is partial to the Northland project and really wants to go forward with the Northland project. If that is the case, why do they need any indication from us? We've already told them that we would like to preserve the land, and if they come to us with a plan to preserve the land with Northland, certainly, town meeting would take that up. I see no need for this article. The instances where it was suggested that the neighbors had been heard didn't actually have hearings attached. So the neighbors were not actually heard in a public hearing. There was a meeting where Northland presented its plan, but there was no hearing about what the neighbors' concerns were. The most important thing I want to say is that 28 acres where this 70 unit is proposed is in a rural reservation conservation district. That is a very special district that was zoned rural reservation conservation in order to protect the Charles River, and in order to improve the water quality in the Charles River. All of that land drains into the Charles River. It is a part of the Charles River watershed. So adding 70 households with the attendant cars, pets, care, trash, delivery trucks, people, all of that goes into the Charles River. And I don't think it's appropriate to take what a different town meeting did, which is to prioritize the environment of that area and the Charles River, and just throw it away, because now we want something different. This proposal also is different from the fall in one major way. In the fall, we were told that this was going to be a 40B, so we were going to be working with the state to make the project through a 40B. One of the features of 40B is that the developers' profits are capped. And if the developer makes profits over that cap, that money comes to Needham. And when this was what was being discussed, there was ideas that that excess profit could be used to support the infrastructure of the town, because, as others have noted, there will need to be changes to the infrastructure, to the streets, to the sewers, to the sidewalks, to the bus lines, to the way that we do things. So this is very different, because there will be no cap, you can't put a cap on a developer's profit in a zoning change. I would like to ask a question.
Ms. Abruzzi, you have about 30 seconds left.
Okay. Here's my question. Has the Finance Committee heard from any party asking about donating this land to the town, the 28 acres, not the A&R lots, but the 28 acres, without a change in zoning? My second question is, what efforts has the Select Board made to try to negotiate an agreement for the town to obtain the 28 acres, including the meadow, and easement access through one or both of the A&R lots for the town without paying cash or without changing the zoning?
Okay, thank, thank you, Ms. Abruzzi. So I, I heard two questions at the end of your remarks. One was directed to the Finance Committee, and the question was, has the Finance Committee heard about any offer to donate the 28 acres to the town? And so why don't we deal with that first? I'll recognize the chair, Ms. Miller.
Mr. Moderator, is the microphone working? Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
It's not really working. Ms. Miller, just try to speak right into it, I don't know what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This microphone's working. So the Finance Committee has not been contacted directly regarding any donation to the town, although we have heard that there may be such a donation, but we have not been contacted directly.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. The second question was to the Select Board, I believe, from a member, and the member wanted to know what efforts the Select Board has made to acquire the 28 acres with easement access without rezoning. And for that, I'll recognize Ms. Cooley.
I, I think the question was, without rezoning and without paying anything?
Yes, that's true. That's right.
Yeah. So- So the town did have discussions with the seller at the beginning. We were actually the very first people contacted. And one of those discussions, the seller at that point was interested in receiving a market-based price for their land. And we had a discussion as a Select Board with the current group at that time. We could speculate about what the recommendation from the Finance Committee was, but I have to say, as a fiduciary for a town, I was not prepared to come to you and ask for an override for the market price for that land, right? So we could have acquired the land outright, in which case the town would have had access, all right? A different opportunity presented it to, to us. We have followed through on that opportunity. We have had no discussions with anybody else about how we would gain access through lots without paying because I do not know who else we would talk to, right? Under the terms of the potential agreement that we've discussed, we own those lots out at the street, and therefore, we have access through them, right? That is the scenario that's been in front of us. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley. Discussion, yes, in the front row, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Frederica Lalan, Precinct J. I just want to say, I'm, I'm interpreting this article as a vote for, as an example, like when my husband comes to me on a Wednesday and he's like, do you want to go out to dinner on Friday night? And I say, yeah, let's see what's open. That's the extent of it. I'm not committing to going with him anywhere. So that's how I'm interpreting this particular vote. With regard to the 70 units and the density and all of that, I live right around the corner from the, is it Modera? Modurna? Modera? Which one is the drug? The other one is the development, but I live right around the corner from that. And when that was happening, all of us were very nervous about traffic, about where will the children go to school? I mean, it was a real rending of garments moment. And I have not seen any impact. Now, maybe there are hundreds of kids in the schools that I don't know about, but, but in terms of traffic, there's been absolutely no impact that I have been able to tell, and I know my neighbors have felt the same way for the most part. They install that beautiful traffic light that never has to be used. I also, when considering this particular vote, this particular property, I try to think less about what I need because it's unlikely I will ever get out of my own street, but be, you know, it's a beautiful piece of property, it's good for the whole of the town, and so I set aside my own feelings and what it benefits me individually and think about, how could this be good for the whole town? And finally, I have a question. In terms of whether the town could then build up that part, that area that would, you know, those 34 acres, whether the town could actually, at some point after purchasing it, we could build it? It is possible, correct, that town meeting could mandate that it remain conservation forever, correct? Or, or not correct? Thank you.
Ms. Cooley, to respond to the member's question.
It is possible that town meeting could mandate that. Oh, the other one, right. Sorry about that, the working mic. It is possible that town meeting could mandate that. It is possible that zoning could mandate that. There could be any of a number of things. If you recall what the Select Board asked, was that town meeting not designated, that it be designated as open space? We actually have some needs to have some open space that the town controls and owns to be converted into conservation land, all right? And if we do not have open space like this that can be converted, we are at a loss, and literally, we're like trying to buy street corners and cobble together enough open space to meet the open space needs that we need. So thank you for that question.
Discussion?
Lance Brown, Precinct A. I move the previous question.
Mr. Brown, who was the previous question, which is not debatable, requires a two-thirds vote for passage. Favorable action on the motion would bring the two motions now on the floor through an immediate vote. Those motions are a motion to amend from Ms. Danenberg and a main motion under Article 16. So on the motion, the previous question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Two-thirds declared on a voice vote. The motion carries. We come to an immediate vote. Under our rules, we reach the motion to amend first. Under the motion to amend, Ms. Bannenberg moves to amend the main motion under Article 16. Her motion would remove the language "amending the zoning laws" to. It would further amend the following word, "allow" to "allowing." It would eliminate and delete the language "for clustered," and it would insert, it would delete the words "as approximately 70 townhome housing units." And finally, the motion would replace the figure 5% with the figure 12.5%. On the motion to amend, a majority required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay.
Nay.
The nays have it. The motion fails. This brings us to a vote on the main motion under Article 16. Under Article 16, Ms. Mary Ann Cooley moves for a non-binding resolution relating to certain open space zoning, and the text of the main motion is identical to Article 16 in your warrant. Like all non-binding resolutions that have come before the meeting by citizens' petition, for example, a majority is required for passage. The effect of the resolution is non-binding. On the main motion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. The motion carries. Majority declared on a voice vote, and I declare Article 16 disposed of. This brings us to the next order of business, which is to dissolve this special town meeting. A motion to dissolve has been tendered by the Chair of the Select Board. I really hope those aren't town meeting members leaving. I really hope they're not. A motion to dissolve this town meeting has been tendered by the Chair. That motion to dissolve has been accompanied by an honorary resolution. The following resolution is offered to this body in memory of Kathleen Marie Deegan Lewis. The motion reads as follows. Whereas Kathleen Kathy Marie Deegan Lewis was born in Bryn Mawr, Pennsylvania, graduated from St. Catherine of Siena School, and attended Villanova University; and whereas Kathy settled in Needham in 1972 and raised three children, Michelle, Patricia, and A.J. And whereas Kathy was a valued member of the Needham Business Community, having a long and successful career as a local Realtor. She will be remembered for her tireless work promoting women entrepreneurs and business leaders in town through her engagement with the Needham Business Association, the Needham Exchange Club, and the J.C.'s. And whereas Kathy was devoted to her faith, taking special joy in her participation in the choir at Our Lady Help of Christians Church throughout her adult life. She was a longstanding member of the Needham Garden Club, serving multiple terms as its president. And whereas Kathy served as a town meeting member for 43 years, from 1978 to 2021. Now, therefore, be it resolved by this body that the October 2023 special town meeting be dissolved in honor of the many civic and community contributions of Kathleen Marie Deegan Lewis to the town of Needham. All those in favor of the motion to dissolve and the accompanying honorary resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution carries. The special town meeting is dissolved.